Okay, five seconds. Hello and welcome to this evening's meeting of the Westboro Board of Selectmen. It is Tuesday, March 9th, 2021. This meeting is being held remotely. And as we've become accustomed to, I will read the Governor's Orders that allow us to meet remotely. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting, including a public hearing of the Westboro Board of Selectmen, will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with the right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the Town of Westboro's website at town.westboro MA.us. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to watch the meeting may do so through Westboro TV's online platforms, youtube.com/westburotv and westburotv.org, or on Charter Channel 192 or Verizon Channel 28. No in-person attendance and members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event we aren't able to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on the Town of Westboro's website an audio or video recording, transcript for other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. Members of the public attending this meeting virtually will be allowed to make comments if they wish to do so during the portion of the hearing designated for public comment by calling the Board of Selectmen's office at 508-366-3030, or sending an email to selectmen, that's plural, S-E-L-E-C-T-M-E-N, at town.westboro MA.us to obtain a link to join the meeting. And Westboro TV is also going to post that link during, just before the public portion of the meeting. So with that, I will go ahead and review tonight's agenda. We will then review openings on town boards and committees. So Alan, thank you so much for sharing the agenda first. So with a huge smile, tonight's first agenda item is reorganization of the board. Very exciting. At 6:10, we'll have open forum. I believe there's one person so far to speak at open forum. And again, there's an opportunity to do so on our agenda. You can see the instructions there how to do that. That's a new item on our agenda, recently reinstated. At 6:20, we'll have upcoming events and activities. 6:25, Town Manager's Report. At 6:30, we'll have a public hearing for a request to approve the transfer of a wine and malt liquor license from SVR Group LLC DBA Maori Indian Cuisine to PVR Group LLC DBA Maori Indian Cuisine. At 6:45, we'll have a presentation by the Climate Action Task Force on the Climate Action Plan. 7:05, discussion vote to sign a letter of support for the interim Clean Energy and Climate Plan. That will be presented by Pete Dunbeck. At 7:10, Karen Henderson and Steve Hart will be on to tell us about a letter of support for streaming bill HD 1440 and SD 834. That is a discussion vote. At 7:20, request to approve a Class 1 dealer's license for John Ed Westboro Motor Cars LLC at 273 Turnpike Road. And we'll have the attorney representing the client on, I believe, for that portion. At 7:30, discussion vote to approve amendments to the Police Department of Rules and Regulations. And I see our police chief Jeff Loria is already on. At 7:40, request to, Kristi, are we passing over? I'm sorry, number 11, yes? Yeah, okay. So number 11 is not ready for primetime, so we'll pass over that. Number 12, 7:45, discussion vote to execute the settlement agreement and release of claims between the Town CBRE Hairy Inc. and RAC Builders Inc. 7:55, request to designate a selectman to review the water facilities contract operator bids. Kristi will present that as our town manager. 8 o'clock, discussion vote to approve the engineering administrative assistant job description. 8:05, discussion vote to approve the golf assistant job description. Again, those, I believe both of those sessions will be presented by our assistant town manager. At 8:10, discussion vote of the Animal Control Bylaw Amendment. That's the chicken and poultry bylaw. At 8:20, discussion to set a date for board retreat. 8:25, approval of meeting minutes from January 26, 2021. At 8:30 PM, we will have issues and correspondence of the selectmen. And we will have an executive session tonight to act under the authority of the board to approve executive session minutes to discuss strategy related to collective bargaining with all unions to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate at Zero Bravo Street and 64 Otis Street. And with that, Alan, if you could pull up your slides on opening town boards and committees and walk us through that. Thank you.
Sure thing, thank you. So we have a number of openings on different boards and committees. The openings you see on the screen right now are appointments made by the town manager. And so Cee La Door, our confidential administrative assistant, will accept letters of interest for these positions. One member for the Board of Health, a three-year term. The Cable TV Advisory Committee is looking for two members. This committee assists in negotiating franchise agreements. Very important for the sustained sustainability of our local access in covering these meetings and other events in town. There's an open position, one-year term for a constable. We have one position and a three-year term for insect pest control officer. One-year, one-year term, one position for the measurer of wood. And we have two openings for three-year terms on the municipal building committee. With respect to appointments that are made by the Board of Selectmen, we're looking for two members to fill out three-year terms on the Council on Aging, which oversees services for the elderly in the senior center. The Country Club Operating Committee has a three-year term for a non-voting member. The Cultural Council has openings for up to 11 members with three-year terms. The Historical Commission has a three-year term open for one non-voting member. The Housing Partnership Committee is looking for one member to fill a three-year term. And the Open Space Preservation Committee has a three-year term open for one member as well. The Senior Disabled Taxation Aid Committee, this is a committee that oversees the town's tax relief programs, is looking for two members. It's a three-year term. The Spirit Committee has one-year term. They're looking for one additional member. Sustainable Westboro has as many members as people want to get involved, and the term's indefinite. So if you're interested in sustainability, please get involved. Our Veterans Advisory Board has one opening on a one-year term. The Westboro Affordable Housing Trust has two trustee memberships open, a one-year term and a two-year term. And the Westboro Housing Authority has one member. This is a remainder of a five-year term ending in 2024. And that organization oversees Westboro Housing Authority operations. For committees appointed by the moderator, interest should be sent to moderator@town.westboro MA.us. The Walkup Robinson Trust Fund Committee, which oversees a fund for open space, has a three-year term. One of those open and available. So this is a great opportunity to get involved in an area that interests you, where the town could use your energy and expertise.
Thank you so much, Alan. So just before we jump into the reorganization of the board, which is the first agenda item, I want to thank outgoing Selectmen, Selectmen Hashmi, for his service to the board. I also want to welcome new members Sean Keough and Patrick Welch. So guys, welcome to the board. Great to have you on.
Thank you.
And so this agenda item is tradition here in Westboro. It is always the first agenda item after the election, where the board will elect a new chair and vice chair. And once elected, they, those individuals will, sorry, it takes effect immediately following the agenda item. So with that, Alan, can I share my screen? Yeah, I probably can. That's okay. Okay, so we have to have any motions for appointing a chair?
I would move that we appoint Alan Edinburgh as chair of the Board of Selectmen for the next year.
I will second that. Any discussion? Okay, as we do on these meetings.
I'm willing to serve.
You can't discuss that.
Yeah, no, 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 actually, there's no discussion. Although now you brought it up, we should ask, are you willing to serve?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll call for a, we'll do these, I guess separately, a roll call vote. Selectmen Keough.
Keough, yes.
Selectmen Welch.
Welch, yes.
Selectmen Johnson.
Johnson, yes.
And Selectmen Edinburgh.
Edinburgh, yes.
And Selectmen Marshall, yes. And so let's see if I can actually do this. Well, you know, I had a gimmick where I had a gavel. I was going to hand it to you, but I can't figure out how to share the screen. So just imagine that I'm going to hand it over right now because I'm no longer chair. And so Alan, take it away. I'll see you guys later.
Okay.
Actually, Alan, before we go, and I just, Shelby, thank you so much. Phenomenal job in a very difficult year. I know how it feels. And, but you did much better than me. You kept most of the meetings on track. I don't think I kept any of them on time. So just thank you for all you did. It was, you were great in your role as chair, so thank you.
Well, thank you for your mentorship, Ian. I appreciate it. I had great mentors in you and Lee, and so thank you. It was my pleasure, truly. So I feel like I'm like, what's his name, writing the thank you notes, and I'm out of here. But I'm not, I'm still here. Alan, the floor is yours, please.
Okay, great. So our next order of business on this agenda item is the election of a vice chair. And so I open up the floor to nominations.
So I'd like to move to appoint Ian Johnson as vice chair, please.
I'd second that.
Okay, we have a motion to nominate Ian and seconded. Any discussion?
I almost started with that, Alan, so you're gonna have to.
Shelby, it takes a while, let me tell you, it takes a while.
I was like, any discussions?
Okay, hearing none. We'll move to, we'll move to a roll call vote. Selectmen Johnson.
Johnson, yes.
Selectmen Keough.
Keough, yes.
Selectmen Welch.
Welch, yes.
And Selectmen Marshall.
Marshall, yes.
And Edinburgh, yes. So Ian is hereby vice chair on a vote of 5005 being present. Congratulations, Ian. Welcome, welcome to the, to the side chair, I guess. You can slide a little bit to the left, as things go normally if we were in our in-person meetings. Okay. Looking forward, I do want to welcome our new members to the select board as well. Welcome aboard. You know, be careful what you wish for, I guess, but here you are. And looking forward to a good productive, productive year. Next on our agenda, to keep things moving, is our open forum. And I believe we had one person contact the office to participate. Is that person with us? I don't see any individual online. Okay, is that individual is not here. We will move on with the agenda into upcoming events and activities. And so are there any members of the select board that want to highlight any upcoming events or activities?
Yeah, Alan, I got, I got one that I wanted to share with the group.
Okay, Patrick, and then Ian.
Westboro Connects Spring Kindness Week is March 21st through the 27th. Please take a look at their website for more information.
Okay, great. And Ian?
Yeah, just a reminder, I brought this up the last time, but the Westboro Boy Scout Troop 100 is hosting their annual senior dinner. A little bit different this year, but kind of following the model that the senior center has run for other monthly dinners. But that will be on Saturday, May 20th. Seniors can sign up through the senior center. They're taking kind of reservations for that. It will be a drive-through service. And we'll also be delivering to folks who can't make it out or don't feel comfortable driving. We will deliver to homes as well that evening, but just encourage all seniors to, to sign up through the senior center. So we know that we have enough dinners prepared. And just a hope for nice weather. If the weather is nice, we will be socially distancing with scouts outside playing music as the seniors arrive. So should be, should be a fun night, as it always is, and a great way to kind of give back to the, to the seniors in town. So thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Sean.
Nothing, I'll sit down.
Okay, and Shelby?
Yep, just one update. The Westboro Public Library will be hosting a strategic planning session, Zoom style, on March 29th. It's a Monday night from 7:00 to 8:00 PM. You can find the details on their website. And the public is welcome to attend and provide your thoughts and ideas for what the library should be like for the next five years. So encourage everyone to participate.
Okay, great, thank you, Shelby. And that is a great opportunity to participate. It's what I had on my list, so I have no further events. So with that concluded, on to the next item on the agenda is our town manager's report. So I'll hand it over to Kristi.
Thank you. We just wanted to give a vaccine update. On March 1st, the Westboro Legislative Delegation, along with legislators from the regional communities, sent a letter of support for the proposed regional vaccination site to the Department of Public Health Commissioner Barrell. Also, last week, the health agents from each town involved in the proposed collaborative had a call with Assistant Commissioner Dana Ferguson. She provided some feedback on the initial proposal and then also asked for additional information. So Thursday evening, that formal draft was sent to DPH, and we expect to hear from them and their final determination of whether or not we can hold a regional vaccination site this week. The bond rating, the town recently had a bond rating call for an upcoming borrow of $53.4 million. Standard and Poor's has reported that the town will maintain its SP plus one short-term rating, as well as the town's AAA long-term rating. It's very exciting. An update with WRTA and VIA. The board had previously requested that I look into the implementation of a voucher program. And so I did get on a call, Jim Robbins and I, with CMRPC, WRTA, and VIA last week, inquired about the program. I just wanted to update the board that implementation of this program will require multiple approvals from some of these organizations, including WRTA and possibly Mastop, because they're the ones that we have received the grant through for, for the VIA service. So we'll continue the conversation about that and keep the board updated. For new hires, on March 15th, Zach Bogner will be joining the Community Development Department as the town's new Economic Development Coordinator. He has a bachelor's degree in computer science from Columbia University and has been employed as a business analyst at McKinsey &amp; Company since 2019. So we'll bring Zach to your open forum at your next meeting, so you can meet him virtually. Also, Jack Nogujian, who was previously the contracted golf manager at the Westboro Golf Club, has been hired to fill the newly created golf manager town employee position. So he'll report directly to the Recreation Director under the new structure. So he'll fully be under the new model that was proposed. And so Jack will provide some good institutional knowledge and consistency while helping take that department and position from a contracted position to an employee position under the Recreation Department. For department head updates, the Building Department's updating that 400 Freiburg Parkway, Verizon presently has a building there that does computer storage, and they're proposing additional approximately 20,000 square foot building for more computer storage. And then this will be coming before the board in the next couple of weeks. The Conservation Commission, the Hakamaka Pond Reuse Committee, will convene on Wednesday, March 10th at 7:00 PM via remote participation. So details of how to participate in that will be on the webpage. The Department of Public Works, as the board may be aware, in recent news, there was unauthorized access, or unauthorized access was obtained to alter the amount of chemicals used as part of the water treatment plant process at a plant in Florida. The plant personnel immediately noticed this change in dosing and corrected the issue. So lessons from this incident have been shared throughout the water industry, and our DPW is monitoring for any new best practices. They recently reviewed our cyber protection procedures with the contract operator at the water treatment plant to confirm appropriate protection measures are in place. And DPW leadership will be attending a seminar later this month on cyber protection, which is sponsored by the Mass Waterworks Association. They wanted to highlight a couple of their employees, recent efforts by Dana Jackman and Steve Bowman, who maintain DPW police and other vehicles. They're both tremendous assets to the town. And then also, the DPW welcomed Steve Bukary this week as their inspector. Steve brings a wealth of information, as we all know, and experience to the department, and they're excited to have him as part of the team. The Planning Department has provided us information on the Otis Street corridor study. So as you may know, this was part of the Amazon site plan approval. Amazon was required to conduct a corridor traffic study at Otis. There's a lot of detail in this update, and the town planner has also provided the actual study. So those will be posted on the website, and the study is actually also posted on the Planning Board website. And then the Police Department has updated us. Tonight, you'll be hearing about, hearing from them on their rules and regulations for the WP, the WPD. Those, the updates have been completed, and then those will be coming before the board tonight per the town charter. And they're also in the process of implementing a body worn camera policy. And a trial unit will be worn by a supervisor in the coming weeks as they prepare to implement that program next fall. That's it.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any questions or? Hearing none. Our next item on the agenda scheduled for 6:30, it's a public hearing. The applicants are not yet on the call yet, because it's not yet 6:30. So I'll use my prerogative to jump to another item on the agenda, sort of vampire a little bit. So if we could move to item 18, the approval of minutes from our meeting on January 26, 2021.
I'll move their approval.
Marshall, seconds.
Okay, any discussion, comments, corrections? Okay, with hearing none, head to roll call vote. Ian?
Johnson, yes.
Shelby?
Marshall, yes.
Sean?
Abstain?
Makes sense.
And Patrick?
Good choice.
I'll abstain as well, that makes sense.
Okay, and Edinburgh, yes. So it passes, the minutes are approved by a vote of 3025 being present. Thank you very much. We still have a few minutes. And so if I might move to agenda item 17, discussion to set a date for a board retreat. Or actually, our proponent, our applicant, with respect to our public hearing is, has arrived. So Ramesh, are you able to hear us? You can unmute?
Yes, I can, yeah, I can, I can hear you.
Okay, great. So then we can, if you're hearing.
We have to wait till 6:30 to start.
Oh, you're right. Okay, so we will get started at 6:30, so we'll jump back to setting a date for a board retreat. Kristi, do you want to introduce this?
Sure. So we wanted to set a date for a Sure. So we wanted to set a date for a board retreat now that we have the new members on board. And so the last retreat we had, we held in the Forbes Municipal Building in the Great Hall so we could do social distancing. So if the board is comfortable, I would recommend that we use that location again. The dates that I've suggested are March 30th, which is the fifth Tuesday of the month, either beginning first thing in the morning or in the afternoon at 3:00 or 4:00. And another option could be Friday, March 26th in the morning. And those are just a couple of options. I think it'd be a good to get the retreat on the calendar in the next few weeks so the board can do some goal setting.
Okay, and we're expecting this meeting to run about, this retreat to run about four, four and a half hours?
Yeah, they typically run maybe three to four hours. Yep.
Okay. Shelby?
So in full disclosure, the 30th is Grayson's birthday. So I would be a little stressed about getting out of the meeting and getting, being on time to do that. If it's during the day, obviously not, not an issue. My, my suggestion would be the 26th. I feel like Friday is just sort of easier, although it is the end of the week. My suggestion would be the 26th, but I can be flexible on the 30th.
Okay, and I can also be very flexible on the 26th, the 30th. I have an appointment in mid-afternoon, I can't change, so would have to start probably after 3:00, 3:30 or 4:00 or earlier. And if it were in the morning, I would need to be on the road to my appointment by 1:00 p.m.
Just a question.
Patrick?
Yeah, Kristi, if it was on Friday, is there a packet provided as part of, as part of the retreat? And if so, is that something that would be provided? You know, typically that's provided on Thursdays. I'm just wondering if it's provided any earlier, just so we can do additional prep work if necessary, necessary.
Yeah, so if we were to provide materials, we would certainly do it earlier than, than Thursday. But typically for the retreat, it's, it's sort of minimal in terms of what the goals are, I would probably just forward you things that I already included in your new selectmen packet, like the goals from last year and sort of where we were at with that. So.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, Mike, that Friday would probably be my preference. I could also do it that, the 26th in the morning as well. Both, I mean, the earlier the better to start. If we could start 8:00 or 8:30 would be great, just to get it done, you know, by, before noon time, I think would be great that, on either of those days would be helpful.
Okay, and Sean?
26th would be fine by me.
Okay, and Patrick, we didn't get a feel for you on dates?
I, I have no real preference, so you know, whatever the majority want to come with, I'll, I'll support.
Okay, so if we said, right now, the majority seems to favor Friday, the 26th in the morning, are people comfortable starting at 8:00 a.m.?
Yep.
Okay, 3:26 at 8:00 a.m. It will be in the Great Hall, social distancing, masks, hand sanitizer, and we'll be good to go.
I'll go to the right place this time, since I went to Memorial Hall instead of Great Hall last time.
It's habit, it's habit. Okay, so next item on the agenda, we'll move to our 6:30 item. And it is, at this point, 6:30, so we're able to start as a public hearing. It's a public hearing, a request to approve the transfer of a wine and malt liquor license from SVR Group LLC DBA Maury Indian Cuisine to PVR Group LLC DBA Maury Indian Cuisine. This item is a public hearing, so should a member of the public want to make comment for the purpose of this hearing, please call the Board of Selectmen's office at 508-366-3030 or send an email to selectmen@town.wesboro MA.us to obtain access. Westbrook TV is also putting the link on the lower third of your screen if you're watching the live feed. And so with that, I will entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll move to open the public hearing.
So move, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. And so roll call vote. Shelby?
Marshall, yes.
Sean?
Theo, yes.
Ian?
Johnson, yes.
And Patrick?
Welch, yes.
Okay, so vote of 5, 0, 0, 5 being present. We have opened the public hearing. Okay. So Kristi, you want to introduce the?
Yeah, so this is just a liquor, liquor license transfer, public hearing. So this would go, we received an application from PVR Group on February 10th, and this was advertised because it's the, it's being, it's sorry, it's mayor is being sold to SVR Group LLC. The manager for the premises will be Ramesh Jangaretti, and Mr. Jangaretti is TIP certified by ServSafe.
Okay, great, thank you. And so I guess I'll open the floor up to Mr., let me get the name right, Mr. Jangaretti, to introduce himself to the board and then we'll, we'll open up to the board and then the public for questions.
If I, if I may, my name's David Burton Azzi. I'm showing up here as Holly Daverin because I am on her, her computer. I have some technological deficiencies and I apologize in advance for those.
No worries.
I'm, I'm representing, I'm an attorney in Milford and I'm representing Mr. Jangaretti. And so this is my, I think, third Zoom hearing or Google hearing, so please excuse me if I, if I blunder a little in that.
Okay, so would you or Mr. Jangaretti like to make any sort of open statement?
Sure. So, so there should be submitted with the application an asset purchase agreement. PVR Group LLC, of which Mr. Jangaretti is the principal, is a party to an asset purchase agreement by which it has agreed to purchase the business assets of, of Maury Indian Cuisine. This is an ongoing affair. You should have a fairly detailed floor plan. The restaurant, there aren't any plans to alter the, the actual floor or, you know, early on, the operation of, of the, the business at all. The current owner is a lifelong friend of Mr. Jangaretti and under the terms of the agreement, will be staying on to assist Mr. Jangaretti in making this transition and in, you know, sort of, in, in sort of getting, getting this business squared away and under his own control so that, you know, he can take over in his own capacity down, down the line a bit. There is an existing lease agreement that is ineffective as a five-year term. So, you know, Mr. Jangaretti is, is ready to, to go and looking forward to this, this new venture. I've known him for a number of years. He's very conscientious, hardworking individual. I know he'd be an asset to your community and he is hoping that you would approve this, this transfer so that, you know, he can, he can get going with, with this new venture.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from members of the board? Shelby?
Not really a question, I just want to welcome Mr. Jangaretti to Westboro and just, I wish you, assuming this goes through when we vote positively, that I wish you all the best and look forward to visiting your restaurant and trying your cuisine and perhaps a beverage. So welcome.
Thank, thank you so much, Shelby.
Ian?
I guess, after those comments and as I typically do, the transfer of liquor license, just as a reminder, I know you're TIP certified, so thank you for doing that, as it is a requirement. But, you know, that, that as a board and as a town, we take the liquor laws very seriously and our police do enforce that at times, so we just ask that you kind of remember that. We want it, people to enjoy it, but we also want it to be safe. We don't want to serve minors, we don't want to see intoxicated people, you know, leaving the restaurant as such. So again, trust that you'll do that, trust that you'll, you'll run a great business, but just kind of fair warning, we, we love to see you here and opening a new business and transferring liquor license. We don't like to see you back for a liquor violation, so. So thank you for coming and don't, don't mean to scare you, but we do take it seriously. So thank you very much and, and best of luck in your operation. We look forward to you being here for a long time.
I believe the business plan, you know, will focus predominantly on the restaurant portion of things. I, I don't know that, that Mr. Jangaretti is expecting to have a sort of lively bar business out of the, out of the facility. I, I think, again, the goal is to, you know, to run a really good restaurant and of course, you know, the beer and wine license will, will help his customers enjoy the food rather than coming to drink and, and, and cause problems.
Okay, thank you. Sean or Patrick?
Yeah, I'll just say, Mr. Jangaretti, welcome to Westboro. I look forward to, to going to your restaurant and enjoying your food as well and I'm sure it's going to be a fantastic, fantastic opportunity for you, so welcome to the town.
Thanks, Patrick.
Yeah, I just want to say congratulations, welcome to Westboro and yeah, I look forward to checking it out. Thank you again.
Thanks, Sean. Look forward to seeing you all.
Okay, great. So it appears we do not have any members of the public. I'll just check with the team to see if anyone's contacted us and has been provided the link. Nope, okay, with, with that said, I will take a motion for the matter at hand.
I would move to approve the transfer of license application for PVR Group LLC doing business as Maury Indian Cuisine at 30 Lima Street, naming Ramesh Jangaretti as the manager.
Okay, and do we have a second? Shelby, are I mute, but I think you seconded?
Marshall, second, sorry.
Okay, any further?
You guys are quick to the trigger.
You'll, you'll get there.
It's sort of, it's sort of like Jeopardy, Patrick.
Whoever rings in first, okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a roll call vote, right to left across the top of my screen. Patrick?
Welch, yes.
Ian?
Johnson, yes.
Sean?
Theo, yes.
Shelby?
Marshall, yes.
And Edinburgh, yes. So the motion passes on a vote of 5, 0, 0, 5 being present. I'll now entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
And a second?
I'll second.
You see, you got in that time, Patrick. Excellent. Any discussion? Hearing none, move back to a roll call vote. Patrick?
Welch, yes.
Ian?
Johnson, yes.
Sean?
Theo, yes.
Shelby?
Marshall, yes.
And Edinburgh, yes, so we now close the public hearing on a vote of 5, 0, 0, 5 being present. Mr. Jangaretti, congratulations. Welcome to the business community in Westboro and best of luck as you move forward and take over the operations and, and build a successful business and presence here in Westboro.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so next on the agenda is a presentation on the Climate Action Plan from the Climate Action Task Force and Peter Dunbeck, Chair of the Climate Action Task Force, is here to make that presentation. So Peter, I will let you introduce and proceed.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate this opportunity. As you said, I'm here representing the Climate Action Plan Task Force and we were put in place in February of 2020 as a result of town meeting vote. And we're here to discuss the draft Climate Action Plan, which has been recently published and distributed to you as well as to many others in the community, including boards and committees in town, and it's posted on the town website. I will be going through some slides. I think I can just begin sharing.
Please do.
Yep, and let me make sure that are you seeing my screen?
Yes, you just need to switch so you're on your slides.
Thank you. Do you see the covers? Excellent. Last time I was on here, I, I failed at that first step, so take a minute to make sure it's working. So as I said, I'm here representing the Climate Action Plan Task Force and I think it's really been very exciting and gratifying to work with such a fine group of members and I'm showing them here. This, each of these members has worked very hard over the last year to get us to the point we are at today and, and so I'll mention them by name. Amber Bach, School Superintendent, Lee Emery, retired Board of Selectmen, Andrew Koningsberg, the Chair of the Conservation Commission, Chris Payant, the DPW Director, and six at-large members, Peter Flynn, Stephanie Kelly, Tim Kahler, Shrod Mehta, Tim Paris, and Dave McMahon, who had business conflicts come up in the November timeframe and resigned as an active member, but continues to support us with review comments and other areas. So it's, it's been very gratifying to work with such a, a good group of people. The program we put together is built on and depends on the great work going on at the state level and it's too detailed to go into, too much to go into great detail on, but I will say that there is a, a lot of scientific and climate experts who've weighed in and built a roadmap for the state of Massachusetts to decarbonize over the next 30 years to 2050. And the state has a goal for decarbonization and the key transformation areas are highlighted here. Clean electricity, electrification of transportation, particularly electric vehicles, but also public transportation, building improvements, including fossil-free heat pumps, electric heat pumps, as well as greater efficiency in buildings, both existing buildings and future construction. There are also programs for land use and, and non-energy carbon emissions and our program is built leveraging all of these programs. Our approach is that it's, these changes are coming, they're coming from the state. The state program is mandatory and the best path forward for Westboro is to help prepare the community and assist in this transition that's going to happen. The Climate Action Plan we're putting forward is not mandatory, it's, it's recommendations and frankly, best effort for the community to do our fair share of the state programs. And as you can see from this slide, the Climate Action Plan is built on 10 goals with the goals very much reflecting the state structure. We have programs for clean energy, building electrification, transportation electrification and energy efficiency. These have been identified as the primary goals. These are the ones that are going to change our greenhouse gas emissions most dramatically and are foundational both to the Westboro Plan as well as the state plan. Westboro isn't an exact microcosm of the state, so our kind of balance of effort, let's say, and, and the balance of impact is different in Westboro than it is statewide, but all of the activities are based, based on the programs and the science that have come from the state. And, and as you can see, there are other secondary goals, these are important. These goals help us protect our environment, which we care about, help us enjoy the environment and help us to, and it's, and these are areas which are the community at large feels very passionately about and we feel are a very important part of the overall climate plan. the community at large feels very passionately about, and we feel are a very important part of the overall climate plan. The analysis of of how much impact we're gonna have, we don't have. So the the analysis is based on our ability to mirror and to provide the reductions that the state is is driving. Again, the state programs are mandatory. These are modeling of what would happen, what will happen in Westboro as we do our fair share. And as you can see, it's it's not uniform across sector. The electricity sector will will reduce the greatest in the building heating sector, also a tremendous amount, with transportation being difficult to change and and will take more time. But it's gonna be a very rapid program driven by the state for electrification and transportation. The data we use to create the baseline, which is in 2017, as shown in this chart, comes from a tool that was developed by the Metropolitan Area Planning Committee, MAPC. They developed it for municipalities doing work like this. And we have benefited greatly from it. However, the analysis is is does not provide information that's timely. As you can see, because we're using 2017 data, it doesn't provide us sufficient granularity and timeliness of information to track year over year progress. So one of the areas we're gonna continue to work on is improvement in our data collection and analysis so that we can ensure that our programs are in fact affecting the change we want. The key success factors for this, the changes that are needed are really transformative. They're broad changes. They're impacting everybody in the community. And importantly, they're impacting everybody differently. And it's important that we maintain that understanding. They impact people in different ways based on economics, age, what type of home they live in, and so forth, and they different times. So timeliness of information is really important because we need to to have the easiest transition for people. We need to have people have the information they need when they're replacing their furnaces. And it's, you know, a cold winter in February when the furnace goes out, you can't begin studying what are your strategies in regard to your furnace replacement. So the information needs to be available. And the fuel switching decision needs to be supported by information that's available in advance as well as the availability of contractors and and technology that supports that transition. Our program is again built on the state program. There are a tremendous amount of state initiatives and incentives as well as regulatory changes that will be driving the transition. The information will be provided. I it's important that we engage the community broadly with this information and prepare and and assist our stakeholders in this transition. One key area that we need to continue to discuss is the CAP Climate Action Plan Governance. The initiative won't be successful without clear governance model with clear roles and responsibilities defined. The CAP document initiates this topic and but greater discussion is needed among the town government players, including the town manager and Sustainable Westboro. Significant changes will take time to sort through and to understand. But the task force feels strongly that a there needs to be a staff person who's the single point of contact for for this work. This person would need to coordinate among departments, the various boards and committees, including Sustainable Westboro, as well as the community at large. And so in the document, we're calling this a sustainability coordinator. The key for us is that there is a person identified as the focal point. The model that's been implemented in other towns is using a sustainability coordinator. And the other towns have demonstrated that these positions pay for themselves many times over. In fact, at our community meetings in in December, when we had the initial briefing on the Climate Action Plan, Jill Wilson Martin of Natick came and spoke. She's the Sustainability Coordinator for Natick, and and she reported over eight times value in the cost of her position that Natick has received over the years and continues to receive. In fact, they've recently elevated her to a director level position. So now she's the Sustainability Director of Natick. And and that's indicative of the importance they place on this position through their experience with that work. So I have discussed with Christie, and and I think we've agreed that we're going to start this discussion as soon as possible with your senior staff where we now have the document on the table and the Climate Action Plan to discuss in in some more detail and understand how these roles will be fulfilled over time. It's a it's not an instant transition. I understand that, but I think it's important that we we spend good quality time on understanding how the work is gonna get dulled out and and what the expectations is over time. The work can begin immediately, so it it's not that it needs to wait until we have a sustainability coordinator. In fact, we have some important programs already started. For example, we've initiated a program with Mass Save called the Municipal Partnership Program where we've we're working with Mass Save on energy efficiency initiatives within some difficult to reach demographics which have been underrepresented in in the Mass Save Energy Efficiency Programs. We're also part of a consortium of or collaboration of ten Metro West communities, including Natick. And that group is putting together an initiative on building electrification and building energy efficiency in partnership with MAPC that will be brought to operational status over the next month or two and will run for the next couple of years. So there are initiatives we can begin immediately. But I think it's really critical that we get our roles and responsibilities sorted out and that we identify clear leadership within the town government for for this work. I believe that's a uniform and and certainly the strong position of the task force that we need that focus. So the plan for closure of the document. The task force believes we're ready for movement, moving into implementation and getting beyond the you know, the document writing and and conceptual planning that we've been doing. Community has been involved throughout the process. We have distributed the document broadly and and I can share, if you're interested, who we've shared it with, including many boards and and committees, some of whom we've asked to provide explicit feedback to the Board of Selectmen in regard to their response to the plan. Information that we receive from the community, from the Board of Selectmen, from yourselves by March 26 is our ask to get that information, to collect it and prepare a updated document that we would like to return to the Board of Selectmen on the April 13 meeting with a request for the board to approve it. I did want to also mention the Voices of Westboro interviews, which if you've looked through the plan, you may have noticed that it is really important that we recognize there are many different views of all of these issues. And it and it, as I suggested earlier, there's a diversity within the community and all of the people who who we engage with will have different perspectives, go faster, go slower. My home's too old, it can't deal with this and so forth. That's the reality. We're gonna be launching this plan into, and we need to approach the implementation with that sensitivity and and continue to listen and respond. The Voices of Westboro, we've begun that process of interviewing people, and we're gonna continue. And in the final publication version, there'll be more voices than is in the current draft that you you're now looking at. The plan needs to be flexible. Reality is gonna change around us. We're gonna get experience with programs. We're gonna learn. We're gonna learn from our colleagues in the in the collaborative that we're working with. State programs and goals are gonna change. As a matter of fact, the legislature and the governor right now are in negotiations in regard to a a new roadmap bill for climate, which is gonna change some of the goals. In fact, they're gonna raise the goals, make them more difficult, as well as shorten the timelines as the scientific evidence is showing that a greater urgency on on how fast we need to transition. These are not being done because of Westboro's advocacy. These are being done, and we need to help Westboro prepare. There'll also be taught technology and cost changes that happen over time, which can create new opportunities for change. So this is a a draft plan that we're putting forward. We'd like to close, you know, wrap up the version one of the Climate Action Plan with an understanding that over the years, maybe two years from now, we should be doing a complete review of the plan based on that information that comes out through operational experience. So I at this time, I'd like to stop sharing and ask if you have any feedback or questions.
Okay, thank you very much, Peter. So I'll open the floor up to the board if you have any questions. Patrick?
Yeah, Pete, I really want to say thank you to you and the entire team for all the work you guys have been doing on this, reading through the documentation over the over the weekend. It's really impressive the amount of work that's gone into this. And understanding that this is a really big and very important goal for our community. I'm just curious, and and again, I'm getting up to speed here. Has can you describe briefly what the level of state involvement is with helping us through this? Because, as you mentioned, it's very aggressive and there are, you know, our community is gonna be challenged with implementing some of the things that the state is going to mandate. And I'm just wondering if the state is assisting anyway with in any way with the logistics of rolling out such a aggressive plan for the various different communities.
Sure. As I have one other agenda topic for the meeting today, and that's the final approval of the response to the state plan. And so at the previous meeting, we had a discussion concerning that response. The state has identified that municipal involvement is key and valuable to them, but they haven't defined how how they're gonna go about doing that. So in the letter that I hope to get final final approval on later in in a couple of minutes, we are asking for more clarity, including an advisory board representing municipalities, potential funding, funding for both staff as well as energy coach, you know, technical expertise that the community is gonna need as well as enhancements in our data collection and analysis. So that's in the in the Clean Energy and Climate Plan Response Letter that I believe was distributed to you, but I'm not sure. I I will say, I I believe the state is intent is to do do more support for municipalities. The plan hasn't been documented yet, so we're gonna keep pushing and trying to get specifics on that.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Ian?
Sorry, no, I think the plan is great, and I was amazed that it's only been worked on for a year. Pete, when I was reading through it, I mean, the amount of work and the the amount of reading that that people need to go through, but but it was, I mean, tremendous amount of work. And I look forward to to moving forward, look forward to hearing comments. I guess the one piece that just I guess I struggle, I mean, the the piece, we've done a lot, I think, on the municipal side. We continue to do that and continue to work through changes there as a town. Residences, you said, education is key. I guess the big thing, and and I know we talked about before, is really in the commercial and industrial and how we get them engaged and working with us as well outside of changing codes and some of those other things. But that is, I think, two out of the four areas are directly related to them. And one being, I think it was the, you know, electricity usage today from outside of the community and and really looking to changes that are gonna happen outside of us and where those where that electricity is generated from and kind of non-fossil fuels. But no real questions. I mean, you've kept us abreast of this going forward. I just, again, thank you for the the work. I look forward to other comments from from folks in front of us, but do look forward to having this back in front of us next month for for approval. So thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ian. Shelby?
Yeah. Thank you. I won't repeat what Ian's already said, but I agree with all of those comments. I one observation, Pete, on the voices would be, I I'm glad to see the the sensitivity that you've shared here to different views that will will be shared. This is transformative change, and it's not gonna just happen in Westboro, but it's gonna happen in, you know, where we have shared borders and well beyond us. It has to. And so it will take time, and I sort of envision it like a, you know, kind of a pebble rolling down the hill, and it will get faster and faster, and we'll have some success stories in through education and as different programs are adopted and and a lot of times, people don't want to be the first. So as as there are firsts, and we learn from those experiences, and maybe Westboro will be the first in some cases, and I would celebrate that, but appreciate that sensitivity that you conveyed here. I would love to see continued expansion of those voices of Westboro as part of this program because I think that I think it's important that people kind of have an opportunity to express maybe their hesitancy or their how on board they are with something, and then to reflect on that after the fact, right? So I remember when we put in heat pumps many years ago, and I was like, are these things really gonna work? And I love them. So you know, and then the question is like, you know, how do you get, you know, solar energy to to power those? So I I think that seeing the transformation of those voices is equal as important as the snapshot in time of receiving those. So thank you to everyone on the task force that's done an incredible amount of work. I look forward to providing comments directly to sustain to the, excuse me, task force.
In regard to one of your comments, the I think the town can provide leadership. I think we're in kind of the leading, let's say, cohort of communities in the Metro West area. And that's valuable to us to have friends that are also struggling with the same issues and to share best practices. I also know that other communities are watching us, and and I've talked to some of them. And the idea that we have a net zero elementary school being built and heat pumps at Hastings and so forth. I have cited that to other others neighboring towns. So I I think we can influence the towns around us. And I don't feel, I mean, I'll take everybody's feedback, but I don't feel like we're way down too far out on the leading edge. We're we're in a leadership position, but not too far in my judgment.
Yeah, the the one thing I'll just add to my comment, if I may, Alan, is just you mentioned the electrification the work there, although that sounds like a bad term, electrification. I guess that's not electrician. So with MAPC, I think it will be important, our relationship with CMRCP because of the coverage in our area. So I know we've talked about that briefly at a prior board meeting and that that was important for that conversation, for us to be part of that conversation with that entity going forward. So you know, look to the board as we find a member of this board or our community to represent us on CMRCP that that be at the to represent us on C M R C P, that that be at the forefront, among other things, related to this plan.
I, in regard to M A P C and C M R P C, I have talked to each of them about the fact that we're not in M A P C's patch as this program is going forward. The other nine communities all are. And they're, they seem okay with it. They they see themselves as the leading regional planner and so forth. And I did talk to C M R P C, and we will be applying for a D L T A grant to help in in this program. So over the next few weeks, I'll be working with Jim Robbins in preparing a an application for a grant for C M R P C to help us in this project.
I'm sorry, what is D L T? It's not B L T, but it's D L.
D L T A. Just, somebody help me here.
It's, uh, local technical assistance.
Oh, oh, design local, okay, thank you.
Correct, correct. Direct local technical assistance.
Thank you. Great.
Okay, Sean, any questions or comments?
No, Peter, thank you very much. Um, yeah, I was going through this, and I think the municipal opportunities are great. I I think the residential opportunity, as you guys have have denoted here, is going to be difficult when you talk about, you know, how, you know, if you miss an opportunity on a furnace or something, then it's really another 12 years or so, maybe, before you get another bite of that apple with a consumer. So the, um, I think the the knowledge and the the teaching on that part, I think, yes, is going to be critical to get that started as quickly as possible. And I also agree that because there isn't a lot of electric vehicles in the secondary market, there's a lot of people who just buy used cars. That's probably going to take a little while to to get to that kind of, you know, that that percent that we're looking at, where we're really hoping to make that kind of difference. So I I agree with you, the municipal opportunity and kind of commercial is is really where we hopefully can make our early gains. But this was an excellent analysis. Thank you very much.
One, and and just on the transportation, I'll add that in the used car market comment, the state is clearly aware of that. And as a result of that, to get to 100% electrification of light duty vehicles, the plan is to no no longer outlaw the sale of gasoline and diesel vehicles in the light duty category, cars and trucks, starting in 2035, so that the entire fleet will turn, essentially, the entire fleet will have turned over and by 2050 be all electric.
Thank you.
Wow, okay, very cool. So I also want to thank, uh, Peter, thank you and thank the committee for all of the work. Um, having read the document once, I'll probably take another two times through to fully digest everything and and assess. A lot of my comments have already covered. I I think the outreach, not only an education effort on the residential side, but, um, you know, broader engagement with commercial industrial, you know. So, for example, as part of the state COVID-19 recovery, um, legislation that was passed late in December, there are increased subsidies for, um, electric car charging stations, even in private parking lots that allow public parking, and can incentivize businesses to do something that's good for, um, the environment, good for the economy, but also good for their business, because it it'll become a differentiator. If you're going to go grocery shopping or go out for restaurant and sit for 90 minutes, if you can charge your electric car while you're eating, the one restaurant that might make the difference between where you choose to go, um, or where you choose to shop. And so look forward to the, you know, seeing the feedback and the edits and the and the continuing process, and then continue to work on this. If there's nothing, I'll I'll put it out to the board. If there's nothing else, we'll move to the next item, which Peter is also intimately involved with. Okay, so next up on the agenda is, um, a discussion and vote to sign a letter of support for the interim Clean Energy and Climate Plan. And I'll turn it back to you, Pete, as you've, um, have an updated draft of this document.
Let me actually not share, because it's a big, long word document. I believe you have a copy of it. We discussed this at some in some detail in the February meeting. Since then, one word has changed. And we now have, um, uh, I believe it's 17 communities. I'm still counting Westboro in the yes category. Seventeen community communities are have signed on, and we're expecting to to break the 20 community level. The one word that was changed was in the M S B A funding, uh, instead of being a net zero requirement, it's a net zero ready. And the nuance of that is that the building needs to have the energy efficiency of a a net zero building, but doesn't need to be entirely fossil fuel free in regard to its heating system.
Okay.
Any questions?
Uh, Ian?
Yeah, Pete, I think the the last time you brought it forward, the other thing, the other piece was that this hadn't been, you hadn't had the chance to run this through the committee. I'm assuming that's happened by now, and if you could just comment on that, that would be great.
Yeah, it it was on my slide, and because the slide isn't in front of me, I forgot to mention it. We did review it at the, um, Climate Action Plan Task Force on March 1st and got unanimous approval to, uh, recommend to the board that you sign sign on and continue to support this. So, um, the prior meeting, discussion, task force meeting, there was some language in regard to the building code that could cause concern. We addressed that in the draft that you actually reviewed last time. It was already addressed. And and that's now the signature copy that's being circulated among the communities. So that's, uh, that's been addressed.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Shelby?
Just a comment. Um, it says that we don't need a motion in our packet, but I'm wondering if we should take a vote, um, to support, uh, signing of this. I feel like it's important enough that we should vote on this, that the board is okay on that.
I I agree, and it says it's looking for multiple representatives. So I guess, Pete, are you, I assume you'd be looking for the board of someone from the Board of Selectment to sign on behalf of the board, the town manager, and I guess which signatures are you looking for?
Any, any authorized e- either the Chair of the Board or or the Town Manager would be sufficient either.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion. Shelby, since you.
Sure. So, um, I will make a motion to authorize our town manager to assign the joint comments on C E C P 2030 Plan, uh, final version letter regarding the interim clean energy and government plan for 2030.
Okay, and a second?
I'll second.
Patrick seconds. Okay, any further discussion? Okay, then a roll call vote. Patrick?
Welch, yes.
Ian?
Johnson, yes.
Shelby?
Marshall, yes.
Sean?
Theo, yes.
And Edinburgh, yes. So the motion passes passes 500 with five being present. Thank you very much, Peter, and thank, please, you know, relay our thanks and gratitude to the entire Sustainable Westboro Committee and the Climate Action Plan Task Force.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your ongoing support.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and so next on the agenda is a discussion and vote to sign a letter of support for the Streaming Bill, H D 1440 and S D 834. And here to present the issue in the letter, Karen Henderson, the Director of Westboro TV, and Steve Hart from the Board of Westboro TV, if I have that correct.
Great. Okay, thank you. Um, good evening. Thanks for giving Westboro TV some time on your agenda. I am joined by Steve Hart, who is Chairman of the Westboro TV Board of Directors. As my email to you indicated, we're requesting your support for a bill that is currently working its way through the legislation, um, the legislative process and the Commonwealth. But before I get to that, just, um, I thought it might be a little bit helpful to explain to the board, considering you have a couple new members, um, just about how Westboro TV is funded, kind of how it works. So I'm going to do that very quickly, being respectful of your time, but I thought it was important. The way things work, the town of Westboro enters into a franchise agreement with Verizon and with Charter to allow them to use our rights of way with their poles and wires that are located on sidewalks and land all over town. We enter into that agreement to let them use that those rights of way to offer cable in Westboro. And as part of that agreement, they give a percent of their revenues based on their number of subscribers for local access cable stations, which here in town, here in town, are run by the nonprofit, which is us, Westboro TV. So to be clear, the cable companies are the ones that pay for Westboro TV to exist as a nonprofit, but the town itself is the one that enters into those franchise agreements with the cable companies to use the rights of way. So what I'm here tonight for is reaching out to ask if the board would consider writing to our delegation on Beacon Hill in support of a streaming bill that's been introduced in both the House and the Senate. It's H D 1440 and S D 834. It's a really long name. An act relative to a streaming entertainment operator's use of public rights of way. So just in brief, the bill kind of follows that same model of cable franchises. It imposes, the bill would impose a 5% fee on those digital streaming providers, which are also using public rights of way to sell their services to Massachusetts residents. And they currently pay nothing to do that. So this kind of just mirrors what has been happening with cable companies since back in the 80s, when it was agreed that if they were going to use the rights of way, they were going to give the towns, um, something in return for that. So the revenue for this particular bill, and again, it was introduced both on the House and the Senate side, so one bill introduced in both places, but the revenue would be divided between the state, the town, and local access centers like Westboro TV. So part of the idea would be that the Commonwealth would get some revenue from that, the town itself would get some revenue, and local access would also get some funding. So in part, it's designated to help protect local access, which is why I'm here in front of you, which has been facing declining revenues as viewers shift those viewing habits away from cable and towards streaming. I mean, every time someone cuts the cord, a little piece of meat dies inside. Because every time there's one less subscriber, it's a little bit less for us. And, you know, last year, we had a 6% decline in revenue. And it's just, you can't keep declining in revenue without making that up somewhere else. I don't know, Steve, I'm doing a lot of talking. You want to say anything?
Yeah, very much. Thank you, Karen. I trust everybody can hear me. Um, yeah, I think picking up on that, and and just one of those unknown facts, I don't want to bore people, but, you know, the the stats from last year alone for Westboro TV are quite phenomenal. And just taking, as I think you all know, we we cover public education or government, and just taking those gov meetings. In 2019, we handled 102 gov meetings. In 2020, that number went up to 243. I think that's about 135% increase just in government meetings alone that we actually covered, recorded, and and put out there. And I think, you know, the key for me is that there's no doubt that the community has not only found that Westboro TV, but folks have also trusted in us to to deliver. And I think that's a really important message that we we need to keep, we we need to keep in mind, is that we're part of the fabric. We want to continue to be part of the fabric, but in order to do that, um, you know, our small but beautiful team, you know, we do have to actually feed and water them occasionally, and, you know, we'll need the money to do it. And and secondly, uh, that aside, we are in, you know, the business of technology, and technology is always getting ahead of us. We do have to invest in our assets. We've got a great team. Currently, we've got the ability to produce what we've produced, but the future holds an awful lot of technical change, and we have to be able to keep up with it. And in order to do that, we have to be able to fund it.
Thanks, Steve. So, yeah, so the bottom line is, I would ask if the board might pass the resolution. I had sent a a letter over to Christie, um, but be willing to send that letter to our delegation in support of the bill. I did reach out to all four of our legislators, and I'm happy to report that all four of them, uh, signed on to be cosponsors for this bill, for the bill on the Senate and the House side. So your letter of support would really be supporting them, um, in their support for, how many times can I say support? For the, uh, for for their support of that bill, and just so that they know that they have constituents behind them who are, um, you know, interested in this, and help try to get some traction for this bill and maybe bring in some revenue. Again, it, there was a bill last year, and it, one of the reasons it had trouble getting traction was because in January of last year, February of last year, things were looking good at the state level, and the feeling was, all right, we aren't really looking for revenue and and how quickly things changed. But one thing I like about this bill is, it does really seem like the streaming companies at this point are not are not paying anything for those local rights of way. And certainly, if there's an industry that has done very well, especially in the past year, um, it's that streaming entertainment industry. So so that's what I, we've come here for this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, any questions from members of the board? Shelby, you're off mute. I'll go to you first, and then Sean.
I I was going to jump in with the motion, but if you want to have discussion first.
No, we we can go for the motion and then discuss.
I move to approve the resolution as presented and to authorize the town manager to send a letter, um, to the delegation on behalf of the board.
I'll second that. Sorry, Sean.
Okay, any discussion?
Yeah. I I just can't emphasize enough the importance of the work that Westboro TV does. That's become all too apparent during the pandemic. And I think it's, you know, it's cast a sort of a beautiful light on a service, um, that I think we've always valued, but it's probably been underappreciated. And I think it can only get better and stronger. And so I think that this, um, I like these bills because it sort of balances the playing field for, um, a business and, um, that is benefiting from bringing service to, um, those that choose to purchase it, um, but also supports local access TV. So wholeheartedly behind it.
Thank you. Sean?
Yeah, yeah, I agree, um, with Shelby. It it seems to me a matter of fairness. I think that, you know, that these these streaming companies aren't paying this, whereas all of the cable companies are. And it it's sort of like, you know, back in the days when you didn't pay tax when you ordered from Amazon, but you paid when you went down to, you know, the mall. Um, I I think it it is unfair, and and this makes complete sense. I'm in full support.
Okay, Ian, you're off mute. Did you have a comment or a question?
Nope, I was ready to vote.
Okay, he's ready to vote. Um, should we read the resolution into the record? Looking for guidance, Christie?
Uh, yeah, you can.
Okay, Ian, do you want the honors?
Sure. So it's just a resolution, correct? Not the whole letter?
Starting the, starting with a resolution.
Yep, so, uh, a resolution in support of Massachusetts legislation relative to a streaming entertainment operator's use of public rights of way, whereas our community values the robust local programming provided by our community media media center, Westboro TV, in particular during the COVID-19 pandemic, whereas changes in technology and the public's consumption of entertainment have necessitated the need for changes in law to keep pace with innovation. And whereas digital streaming companies use public rights of way to sell their product across Massachusetts, and whereas the COVID-19 pandemic has demonstrated clearly the importance of services and programming offered by community media centers. Now therefore, now therefore be resolved that Westboro encourages the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to pass an act relative to a streaming entertainment operator's use of public rights of way.
Okay, thank you. If there are no more questions, we'll go to vote or comments. Ian?
Johnson, yes, and that 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 is a mouthful to say that act. Johnson, yes. And that, that, that is a mouthful to say that act.
Shelby?
Marshall, yes.
Sean?
He, oh, yes.
Patrick?
Welch, yes.
And Edinburgh, yes. So the motion passes five to zero, zero, with five being present. Thank you very much, Karen and, um, Steve.
That's great. Thank you so much. Thanks. I'm going to go back. Just by the way, we got five meetings tonight. Five meetings that we're covering. So, uh,
Awesome.
Yeah. So, um, thank you so much for your time and for your support. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks.
Okay. So next on the agenda, um, we have, uh, Kevin Riley representing John Ed Westboro Motor Cars LLC with a request to approve a class one dealer's license for John Ed Westboro Motor Cars LLC at 273 Turnpike Road. And so Christie, if you would like to introduce this.
Um, sure. So the applicant is seeking to redevelop the premises as a facility for sales and ser, service of new and used vehicles. Um, so the application materials, including the site plan, were included in your packet. Um, we do send those out for review by the other departments. And so the responses from the building department, conservation department, police department and fire department are, were included. Um, and we had also, uh, received comments by the treasurer collectors office. Um, all, um, all taxes and fees owed to the town are paid, uh, to date. And so, um, I'll let Mr. Riley present from here.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members and Madam Town Manager. Uh, Kevin Riley, I'm, I'm based in Randolph, Mass. Um, and as was just indicated, we're here to seek, uh, issuance of a class one license for the property at 273 Turnpike Road. Um, my client, the LLC, um, it's an app, it's a, uh, limited liability company from here in Massachusetts, basically comprised of two individuals, um, who collectively currently hold interest in, I'm going to say approximately 20 motor vehicle dealerships, uh, ranging from New York up through, uh, the state of Massachusetts. Uh, so they're certainly well versed, uh, in, in the car business. Um, if I have the history correct, uh, this location was for a fair number of years uh, home to a Nissan dealership, which is what this applicant would operate. I think more recently there had been a proposal for an establishment of a Volvo dealership there, although I don't know, uh, for certain how far along in the town process that that, uh, application may have gone. Um, my folks do plan to, uh, initially invest in a remodel of the existing premises, uh, the building. Uh, they're certainly excited about the prospects of, uh, doing business at this location and, uh, in the town of Westboro generally. Um, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have, uh, and otherwise would, uh, just request your support in, in approving the license as requested.
Okay. Thank you very much. Um, I'll open it to the board for any questions or comments.
Um, it, it looked like there was a short-term requirement that, that you need to be in operation by April 1st.
There is, there is some, um, pressure, if you want to use that word, uh, being, uh, put in by, by Nissan. And that is, that is correct, um, for reasons having to do with, uh, uh, competition rights and, and the like. Um, they, they do want to see this happen sooner than later to the extent that it can be done, which is why we're looking to do, to do the project in phases, um, to, to really begin to, to operate uh, before the whole remodel is completed.
Thank you.
Okay. Shelby, looks like you're unmuting.
I, wow. You couldn't see me. Um, so, uh, I think we had some, uh, late entering information, Christie, regarding, um, the confirmation that necessary agreements between the, uh, John Ed, uh, Westboro Motor Cars and, um,
Yeah, sorry. So you just hadn't received the fully executed, um, agreement with the dealer. And so that was provided to our office this afternoon, um, which was forwarded to the board, um, in the last couple of hours.
Okay. So that, that's all in order. Um, and, and, um, so I guess, um, we're approving the license, but this still has to go, I'm a little confused, um, to the planning board or does not because there's no site plan required?
It doesn't need to go to the planning board because there's no change. My understanding is that there's no change in the number of parking spaces. Um, so any remodel would be subject to a building permit, um, at this point. But if they were to add parking spaces, then it would have to go to the planning board.
Yeah, I'm muted, Alan.
I should know better. And anything else, Shelby?
Uh, no, no, not at this time.
Okay, Ian?
No, I was going to make a motion if we're ready.
Okay. I'll give Patrick an opportunity to ask any questions first.
I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. My, my question was actually Shelby covered it was whether or not, um, we were working off the current layout of the property, the site plan that was reviewed, um, when it was being considered to be a different car dealership with a different brand. I won't say the name because it's competitive, right? Um, but, uh, but it sounds like you're working off the existing layout of the parking lot, the parking spaces, the building configuration. So.
The only, the only difference, the only difference would be in the interim, uh, while there is a, uh, the temporary, uh, quarters is established, but ultimately, yes, that's correct.
Right. And we've seen the documentation that that's acceptable to the building department and, and, and you have the stipulations from the fire chief as far as access to emergency vehicles and things of that nature.
Absolutely.
Um, and conservation as far as placement of snow piles. Should we happen to have more snow this winter, which
Not happening.
May, it may not happen. Okay. So if there's nothing else, I will.
Alan, if I could, um, ask Attorney Riley, um, just, um, what is the, uh, general timeline? Understand that you've got to, your client has to get in there and there's some temporary, um, component to this, but what is the timeline for sort of fully established business using the building?
Well, the plan right now is that the actual acquisition of the real estate will take place on next Monday, um, assuming that the board votes positively tonight. Uh, and then from there it's, uh, sort of, uh, you know, full speed ahead, uh, and, and, and try to do this as, as quickly as possible. Uh, I think, uh, certainly by, uh, the, um, ideally by fourth quarter, most of everything would be, would be complete. Um, but, uh, uh, obviously depending on materials, depending on mother nature and other things.
Okay. Yeah. No, I appreciate, not, not holding you to it. Just, um, it would be nice to see that parcel actively being used and, you know, cleaned up and some life in it. So.
Yeah, there's definitely, definitely desire to get in there and, and, and get cracking. So for sure.
Get the fire department X off it.
If that's the, oh, yes, indeed.
Okay. On that note, I'll take a motion.
Yeah. So I'll move to grant a class one dealership license to John Ed Westboro Motor Cars LLC at 273 Turnpike Road. Conditional upon car counts is listed in the application and in compliance with all comments provided by town departments.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sean. Okay. Any further comments or questions? Okay. Roll call vote, right to left across the screen. Ian?
Johnson, yes.
Shelby?
Marshall, yes.
Patrick?
Welch, yes.
Sean?
He, oh, yes.
And Edinburgh, yes. So the motion passes a vote of five, zero, zero, five being present. Thank you, Mr. Riley. Appreciate you coming out and please give our best wishes and welcome to John Ed Westboro Motor Cars and
Thank you very much.
Westboro business community.
Thank you for your support. We appreciate it and look forward to a good relationship going forward. Thanks.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You as well.
Okay. Next on the agenda, and I appreciate his patience as we're, we are running a few minutes behind schedule. Um, Police Chief Jeff Laurie is here to talk about amendments to the police department rules and regulations.
I also believe, uh, Lieutenant House is with us as well. Are you here, LT?
Okay, he is here by phone.
Yes. So, um, again, just trying to highlight my talented staff and I, I applaud him. He's actually away right now, uh, but agreed to, to assist. He did a lot of work on this project. And I thank him and my entire staff for all they do every day. Um, we're looking at a document, uh, that's decades old. Um, it was in a binder. Uh, we're talking the eighties. Um, the lieutenant's going to explain, uh, some of the changes relatively minor, to be honest with you. The, the major changes I, I put in my email, uh, just had to do with, you know, things are changing in this world and especially with some of the social issues that we're dealing with. Talking about tattoos, you know, things that may be offensive to people, giving me the ability to have them, cover them up, not put tattoos on certain parts of their bodies, et cetera. Um, that, that's really all this is. And I can have the lieutenant explain. So our policy and procedures right now, uh, which actually fall into me according to, uh, the accreditation process. But our chair, uh, stipulates that rules and regulations, um, if there is any change, uh, would have to be brought to the board of selectmen. So this entire document that you have, minus these very few things that we're going to talk about, uh, are still in place. The difference is we've electronically downloaded them into, uh, our software system that our policies are going into, which allows our officers to sign off on them electronically and then re, review them. Where right now, uh, we just have a few books around the station. So we're just really, uh, getting everything up to date. Once the policy and procedures are in place, uh, and we're really vetted in the accreditation process, I'm then going to be really going through these with a fine tooth comb. But they're just basically a guide. Most of the things in here are relevant. Um, and I can have the lieutenant explain, um, you know, the few changes, uh, that are in place, uh, just to kind of get, you know, into 2021 from 1971. LT, the floor is yours.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So you can hear him. So, uh, these policies, hello?
Yes.
Okay. So these policies were given to us when I got hired in 1988. Um, in fact, that's what I, 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 um, used a lot to, um, basically got the meat and potatoes of the, the rules and regs. And some of them were outdated, like you can't chew gum. I got rid of that. Um, like sideburns and stuff like that. But the tattoo one, we basically, we, we had zero policy, uh, rules on tattoos. So we, we kind of wrote something up and like the chief said, uh, I don't have it in front of me, so I apologize exactly what it says. But, you know, like no, no neck tattoos, no facial tattoos that, that are visible. Uh, no obscene or, um, tattoos that the chief feels that are obscene. Something like 10 years ago wasn't obscene, might be obscene today. So if that's the case, then, you know, you can have the officer cover it up. And, um, you know, try to be more professional and look more professional. And like studded air, the earrings they had in the eighties that man, male officers could not wear earrings. So I got rid of that and said males could wear earrings, but they have to be the same as the females stud. They have to have studded earrings. Uh, like some of them were outdated, like, uh, the cruiser, every time you step out of the, your cruiser, you have to have your radio on, you know, on the speakers. Well, we don't use that anymore. We all, we all have very, um, expensive and high-tech portables. So there's no need for that. Again, I, I apologize and mowing off a memory, off of some of the minor things. But the meat and potatoes are what, what we, you know, myself, the chief and the deputy chief and lieutenant McCloud, you know, believe that, you know, more professional police department that the town of Westboro deserves. And, and it helps us, you know, dictate what type of officer we want. And, you know, some of the rules, you know, are, are very serious, like you can't lie. You know, you got to come to work on time. So those are the, the real meat potatoes of the rules and regs. So, um, again, I apologize and mown off the top of my head. So if you have any questions.
Wait, chief, you need to unmute. You need to unmute, Jeff?
I apologize. Thank you. Um, so basically the tattoos, and I'm, I'm just going to give you a real quick example. Dr. Seuss, um, there's a lot of controversy with Dr. Seuss. If someone had a Dr. Seuss tattoo, give me the ability right now, if that's offending people, I can say cover it up. Um, now I can still issue directives as the chief, but I thought this was an opportunity. We were downloading these into the system. Let's just kind of clean it up a little bit. When the, when the lieutenant's talking about speakers, basically years ago, your siren, it was connected to your radio. So when you get out of the car, because you didn't have a portable, you could hear when you were doing whatever you're doing outside your car, what the station was saying to you. Um, you know, that technology is not in here anymore, but yet it was in this document. So those are the very minor things. Um, and like I said, there was no tattoo policy. And just so the public can know, it's basically no facial tattoos or visible neck tattoos are permitted. No tattoos should be visible below the rest unless permission is received from the chief of police. Unprofessional, inappropriate or offensive tattoos are prohibited. Any tattoo deemed unprofessional, inappropriate or offensive, as determined by the chief of police, shall be covered and out of sight of the public. So as things evolve, um, you know, I, I don't know. I mean, I don't have a tattoo and I'm, you know, in the minority when it comes to that. I mean, they're very, very popular. So I just wanted to get ahead of it a little bit. Uh, and, and that's what's really before you. But, but, uh, I will be coming before you, um, in future meetings. And I welcome, you know, Patrick and Sean to the board. I, I see us working well together. Um, you know, to implement the changes that are going to be occurring. And this is a lot of work, uh, doing these things, making sure our officers have the ability to review them, um, electronically. And that's really what started this, this program. We felt that, uh, we didn't wait anymore. And as policy procedures get implemented, the accreditation process, um, like I said, we get near that completion of certification and hopefully full accreditation, um, in the coming months. Uh, but then I'm going to, I'm going to tack the leaves as far as really get into the, into the weeds. Where if you look in these and you'll see, hey, no leaning, leaning against poles when you're working in detail. You know, I'll probably be adding these like, you know, no excessive cell phone use. I mean, so those are the things that, you know, will be coming. Uh, but I figured this was a good time just to kind of get before the board, bring the rules and regs so you can see them. Um, I was talking to the town manager, when our policy procedures are up and running, you know, I'm going to post them on our webpage. You know, I want the public to know what our standards are and show that transparency. Um, and, and that's really why we're here tonight. And if you have any specific questions, so uniforms, that was another, we entered uniforms. All it is, is if you look at the uniforms, we list what the uniform, if you look at me right now, you'll see in there, if you're a supervisor, gold pens, name tag, badge, you know, the color of your shirt. That's really the only change there. We just specified, this is what you're supposed to wear because we believe in uniformity. We believe in all looking the same. So if you have any specific questions, we'd be more than happy to answer them. I can't thank the lieutenant enough for his hard work, uh, making sure this got done in relatively quick amount of time. Once we realized, hey, look at these things in these binders, you know, we, we really need to update them because this is, this doesn't represent Westboro. I think this in our DMS software system, this represents the progressive department that we are.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'll open it up to the board for questions or comments. I'm, I'm getting a no questions or comments from Ian. Shelby, then Patrick?
Um, good evening, Chief Laurie. Thank you for being here, Lieutenant. Deputy Chief, um, how, um, sorry. I, um, it wa, it was not clear to me if the only changes that were seen before the board tonight are in the policies that are specifically referenced in our packet. And Christie, perhaps you can help me out here, um, because I don't know that Chief Laurie has a copy of that. So I see that the tattoos, um, uniform of the day, and then there's a reference to facial hair and earring rules. Are those all, the only changes that have been made? I thought I heard something to the contrary, that other aspects of this have been updated. I just want to understand what would be approved in.
Jeff, you're on mute.
Chief, you're on mute. Thanks.
We'll allow you to chew gum. You can chew gum. You, there is no technology now for the outside speaker of the cruiser, so we remove that. And the rest of it is just exactly as it was written decades ago.
Okay.
Few changes, just a few that we thought were appropriate, but we're going to dive into this once we get our policies all up and running. And then we'll take a look at this document compared to that. But there's no sense of having two major projects going at the same time. I want to finish one. I just wanted to get this downloaded electronically so they have the ability to access this in their cruisers on the road.
Yeah, no, I, I, I appreciate that and see that need and certainly understand and appreciate the desire to have sort of some of these more progressive policies represent the reality of, you know, the managing of force. Um, I would just ask when, when policies come before the board going forward, that we have a red line version so we can see what has changed. Honestly, it makes it easier to see what the changes are and, uh, will help with, with our review.
Yeah, with, with the policy procedures, which do, you know, fall into my purview. Yeah, with the policy procedures, which do, you know, fall into my purview, they're completely rewritten, completely. They're basically state-of-the-art policy procedures that are vetted through the accreditation process. This document, however, yeah, absolutely, I can do that. It's going to take a while after I finish doing the project. But this project, absolutely, I can, line by line, show you the verbiage that's changed. And then you will have to approve these.
Yep, okay. Yeah, no, I appreciate that, thank you. Thanks.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Patrick.
Yeah, Chief, thank you very much for you and the team working on this accreditation and the policies. It's certainly something I would expect to be ongoing as a continuous improvement to the department. Just a quick question, you know, I see this as a little bit of a learning opportunity for myself. How do these policies get informed to your department? And is it part of the accreditation that they are trained up on these policies on a regular basis?
So what we'll do with our policy and procedures and what we'll do with the rules and regulations is basically, they sign for them electronically. So basically, we're able to test them on certain things, if you wanted to do that, or roll call as a training tool. But in most cases, especially when we deal with policy procedures, it's like a guidebook, you know, best practices. You know, it walks you through everything, almost everything that we deal with on a daily basis. So they're two quite different documents, but they do mirror each other in some ways. So we want to make sure that our rules and regs are, you know, concurrent, you know, once we finish our first process. And again, you're right, they're a continual work in process. Things continually change, and that's why we're excited to be a part of the accreditation process, to have that professional standard. COVID put us behind the eight ball a little bit. Some people that were out of work, that were kind of front lining on the front lines of this project. But we're up to speed now, we're doing well. And, you know, hopefully, I'm hoping, you know, through now to FY22, that we get a lot of this stuff done. And I will be before you, Patrick, to answer specific questions and walk you through, like right now. It's a lot of work right now, as the town manager mentioned, the body camera. Major change in work conditions, you know, writing the policy, working with the unions. We have a device coming in as the town managers, that supervisors agree to wear. There's a lot of changes coming to the Westboro Police Department. It'll take some time. I appreciate the board's patience. COVID has definitely knocked us off through a loop. But we're firing at all eight cylinders right now, and we're looking forward to getting some of these.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay. Sean, did you have any questions or comments?
I'll just quickly say, yeah, thank you, Chief. I think, I think this is great. A lot of times, you're right, these policies and procedures, they, you know, just gather dust. And it's great that you guys have sort of reviewed these and kind of modernized them, you know, just quickly while you're doing other things to make sure they're appropriate. And I look forward to you coming before us again in the near future.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you, Sean. So I guess my question is just to be clear that, is rules and regulations, as you're moving forward with the certification and accreditation process and rewriting the policies and procedures, we would see future updates to this document as well?
You're going to, yeah, so you'll get the policy procedures sooner than later. We're really, we're doing well on that. Once that's done, once we get certified, and we have some breathing room, then I'll get the team together and we'll start tearing this document apart.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, so if there are no further questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the amendments to the Police Department rules and regulations as presented.
Okay, in a second.
I'll second.
Okay, any final comment or questions? Okay, hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Hold on. Chief and Lieutenant, I'm just going to mute you here because we're getting some feedback. Nothing personal. Okay, so roll call vote, Patrick.
Welch, yes.
Sean.
Keo, yes.
Ian.
Johnson, yes.
Shelby.
Marshall, yes.
And Edinburgh, yes, so the motion passes 5-0-0, five being present.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time. Thank you, Lieutenant, for taking time out of your time away with your family to be with us and to say to Patrick and Sean, the water is warm, and we look forward to working with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lieutenant, thank you, Chief. Okay, so the next item on the agenda was a request to authorize a local initiative program certificate for affordable housing. We haven't received the material, so we're skipping over that. And so we make up a little bit of time here and head into our next, which is discussion and vote to execute a settlement agreement and release of claims between the town, CBRE Hury Inc. and RAC Builders Inc. And I will ask Christie to introduce the topic and discussion.
Yep. So as the board may be aware, following the town hall renovation, we identified issues with leaking in the clock tower. In the fall of 2018, the town discussed fixing this problem, but denied financial responsibility for the corrective work. So the cost of the work was divided between other parties. The town did pay for some work related to drywall damage and also conducted an air quality testing, which came back normal. And so this agreement, which has been reviewed and approved by town council, will complete the payment owed to the contractor from Hury. So this is not a payment from the town, it's from the OPM. In signing this, the town is agreeing to release of claims related to this work, and therefore, town council has advised that the board needs to authorize me to sign it, if we are, if you are to approve it. I did speak with the facilities manager, Jim Stewart. He confirmed that since this work was undertaken, there have been no further issues.
Okay, great. Ian, looks like you have a question?
Yeah, no, just a comment as the rep to the municipal building committee. This was discussed in our meeting last week, and the same thing that Christie said, that this was discussed. Jim gave that same comment there, that since the repairs have been made, we've had no water infiltration into that tower, so all good. And supported by the municipal building committee.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion in a second, and we can have any discussion then.
I'll move to approve the settlement agreement and release of claims between the town, CBRE Hury Inc. and RAC Builders Inc. And further to authorize the town manager to execute the document.
Marshall, seconds.
Okay, any further discussions or questions? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to roll call vote. Patrick.
Welch, yes.
Sean.
Keo, yes.
Ian.
Johnson, yes.
And Shelby.
Marshall, yes.
And Edinburgh, yes, so vote of 5-0-0 passes, five being present. Okay, on to our next order of business. We have a request to designate a selectman to review the water facilities contract operator bids. Christie.
Yep, so as the board is aware, the town meeting authorized us to enter into a 20-year contract with the winning bidder for the water facilities contract operator bids. The board was authorized to enter into this agreement at the September town meeting, and so you'd ultimately be the one awarding this contract. The DVW director and I will be putting together a review committee to review the bids as they come in, and we've requested that one selectman be a part of this review.
Okay, so I will, Shelby, you raised your hand.
I have a question for Christie. Christie, what do you anticipate the committee's, how many people generally, who will it be comprised of?
The rest, the others would be town staff. But I don't, I don't have a list of all the town staff that would be part of that review. The director, the operations manager, myself, and one selectman. I'm not sure if Chris is looking to include others in that review.
Would members of the waters, what is the board? I'm sorry, I'm totally blanking on what it's.
Wastewater treatment?
Totally, totally separate, totally separate. Sorry, sorry, thank you, Ian. It's that waste part that always goes in part of the water that I mess up. Okay, thank you for that clarification, all right.
Okay, so I'll ask if there's a member of the board interested in this ad hoc committee.
It's great for one of our two new members.
I would agree.
I'll raise my hand.
Oh, yeah, I thought this was to give a little big for us, yeah. I have to go ahead.
I'd wait for Sean.
Okay, so Sean, would you like to make the motion to nominate Patrick?
Yeah, I just say I nominate Patrick, sure. Patrick Welch.
Okay, so we have a motion to designate Patrick Welch to review the bids for the water facilities contract operator. Do I have a second?
I'll second, Marshall. Thank you, Patrick, appreciate it.
Okay, any comments or regrets, Patrick, or anyone else?
No.
Okay, then we'll do a roll call, we'll do a roll call.
Just think you can put your stamp on this for 20 years, Patrick. It's a great opportunity.
Or you can fail miserably for 20 years, so just.
Nope, no pressure. Okay, Shelby.
Marshall, yes.
Ian.
Johnson, yes.
Sean.
Keo, yes.
Patrick.
Welch, yes.
And Edinburgh, yes, so by vote of 5-0, five being present.
Don, just wait to see what we've got for you next. You might have wanted to go first.
I missed an opportunity.
Christie, just a quick question for you. Will Chris be reaching out to me to get connected here? How will that work?
Yeah, we'll send emails. Chris and I are both on that, so I'll, you know, we'll reach out and set up times that work for everybody.
Terrific, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you very much. And no better way to welcome a new member to the board than to have you drop into an important committee assignment right away. We appreciate that. Next on the agenda is number 14, a discussion and vote to approve the engineering administrative assistant job description. And so I will turn this over to Kim.
Yep, it's me. Thank you. So this is just seeking the board's approval to make some relatively minor changes to some of the administrative functions in this job description. This is an existing job description. We are also looking to remove some references to some technical engineering aspects that have not been performed for quite some time by this position. So I did provide you with a marked-up track changes version, so you could see exactly what was being proposed. And nothing that we're proposing changes the, where this falls on our compensation plan. So that will remain at the same pay grade. Additionally, the position is covered under the clerical union collective bargaining agreement. So we did share the proposed changes with the union, and they have signed off. They have no issues with them.
Okay, great, so I'll open up to the board for any questions. Shelby.
Yep. So first of all, Kim, thank you very much for the redline. That's, as I mentioned in a prior item tonight, that's always very helpful, so I really appreciate that. I did look at this and compare it to where we're at, and I have some concerns. You know, where, as you've already indicated, we're taking out a language around engineering technical work, the ability to read surveys, computations, field engineering duties. We're also changing, though, the, which, I also understand the historical context here. This is what the position was, and it has changed over time, so that was very clear in our packet. But in addition to those job requirement changes, we're also significantly downgrading the educational requirements. So the prior education requirements were the Bachelor of Arts, four-year, or an associate's, plus one or two years' experience, or five years of experience. And now we're at a high school diploma, one to three years of experience with associates preferred. The education change on top of the other changes, to me, doesn't make sense that this would remain at the same job classification code without changes. So help me to understand that.
So that change actually brings it in line with the education and experience requirements for all of our other administrative assistant job descriptions, which are classified at the same N-10 level. While that education and experience requirement, I can't speak to, you know, anything beyond the recent past, but my suspicion is that we didn't adhere to that, or it was no longer relevant, and the position just, it wasn't reflected. Potentially, had that been the requirement, you would argue that the position should have been classified at a higher level.
Higher, okay. Thank you, thank you very much. I was having difficulty reconciling, you know, the other changes I could, because there are some additional requirements that weren't in there before, but that educational piece was, couldn't make sense of it, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Shelby. Any other questions or comments from members of the board? Okay, hearing none, I'll take a motion.
Yes, I'll be happy to make that motion if I get back to my chief here. My move to approve the engineering division administrative assistant job description as presented.
I'll second that, Sutman Johnson.
Okay, any further conversation? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll move forward with a roll call vote. Patrick.
Welch, yes.
Sean.
Keo, yes.
Ian.
Johnson, yes.
Shelby.
Marshall.
And Edinburgh, yes, so motion passes on a vote of 5-0-0, five being present. Okay, it's 8:04. Next on the agenda is a discussion and vote to approve the golf assistant job description. So, Kim, I will hand you the floor.
Okay, so this is a new position. As the town manager mentioned during her town manager report at the beginning of the meeting, we do have a golf manager who is now a town employee. This is as we transition onto this, into the employee-run model. We're fortunate, we have someone who has experience at the course, but we assured him he would not be going it alone this coming season. This position is intended to be a seasonal or temporary position. These are not, this is not permanent. This is similar to many of the seasonal staff positions that the recreation department hires for its summer programs. Obviously, the golf season is a little bit longer. These positions will typically be a mix of potentially a handful of employees working various hours. And they will typically work March through potentially October, November, depending on the season. These positions do report to the golf manager. And just as a reminder, it's similar to the other seasonal positions in recreation, and therefore, they fall on that P scale.
Okay, thank you. I'll open it up to the board for any questions. I see your heads going left and right, Shelby.
Sorry, just to confirm, this is not a benefit-eligible position?
Correct, provided that it's kept under, that it's not a full-time, permanent position, correct.
Okay. Is that based on hours or the whole season, Kim? I'm sorry, just how do we make that determination?
It is based on the hours that the employee works.
Per week?
Yes.
Okay, and my question is just to confirm, this is a position where we could have more than one person hired into. So much like lifeguards take shifts. You know, this is an opportunity for college students, young adults, older adults who are interested in golf to work at the, work for the golf club, you know, part-time during the golf season. Okay. Ian.
Yeah, just to note, I mean, this is similar to how this operated in the past. Again, contract, under the contract, the manager was hiring these attendants as seasonal employees, et cetera. So this is moving it over to the town side. Everything that was said is correct, all the questions were correctly asked, too. I mean, but this will be multiple positions to keep them as seasonal employees, similar to, as Kim said, how things occur in the rec department. And this was also discussed in country club operating committee, which I'm the liaison to and have sat on.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other comments or questions? Okay, I will entertain the motion. Okay, I will entertain the motion.
I will move to approve the golf attendant job description as presented.
Second, Marshall.
Okay. Seeing no indication for any further questions or comments, we'll do a roll call vote. Shelby?
Marshall, yes.
Patrick?
Welch, yes.
Sean?
K O, yes.
Ian?
Johnson, yes.
And Edinburgh, yes. Motion passes five, zero, zero, five being present. Okay, next on our agenda is a discussion and vote on the animal control bylaw amendment, which is the chicken and poultry component of the bylaw. This follows the public hearing held by the board of selectmen last week. I want to thank everyone in the community who took time to read and consider the amendment, to send us, we received numerous emails and written communications, as well as those who attended the public hearing and spoke up. It was good to see the constructive, you know, the civic engagement with everyone working towards making the bylaw the best possible for the town. And so I do appreciate, I want to extend the appreciation from the board for resident participation. I don't know if Christie and our animal control officer, McKendrick, is with us. If you want to make a statement, we can open for discussion.
Sure. So I did provide to the board a sort of a summary of points made at the public hearing. You know, I think a lot of people who were participating in the public hearing sort of echoed similar comments, and so it was, you know, it was pretty easy to pull those together into the points that I had sent to the board, just for the public. There were comments made about structures and confinement and setbacks, repurposing of older structures and permitting those, not using the word confined when talking about keeping animals on your own property. And then there was questions about why different types of animals needed their own structure. There seemed to be some consensus about removing the first paragraph in section four to address some of the setback concerns, and that was supported by our animal control officer, Melinda McKendrick. There were also concerns about statements that poultry or owning a poultry in general could have a negative impact on property value or the neighborhood. So we tried to go through, Melinda and I both went through and tried to address some of these concerns. Not everything was changed, so I did provide the board with a redlined version that shows what changes were made since the public hearing. In looking at the correspondence that we received and some of the items that came up in the public hearing, some of the items that the board may want to discuss this evening is roosters, the number of roosters permitted. That didn't come up in the public hearing, but it did come up in emails to the board previously. Also, the compliance deadline and grandfathering of existing structures and flocks. I know Melinda has a recommendation around the compliance deadline and how we might change that, even different from what's been provided to you in the redlined version. And then hours of noise disturbance. We did receive an email from someone who was concerned that the 10:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. being the only restriction related to noise disturbance.
Okay, thank you very much. So I guess, Melinda, if you have any comment or recommendations on those items, then we can open up for discussion. Okay, you'll just need to unmute.
I'm sorry, I'm watching the cat walk behind me. After the meeting, I made a couple of changes, which Christie put into the redlined version. There was one thing I missed, and I will read that later. The 10 to 7 was to make it a little bit easier for maybe the police to go and knock on the door and say, hey, you're in violation directly. Sometimes the noise disturbance can be subjective. What is too noisy, especially during daytime? Which is why I was thinking having a specific hour period makes it actually easier to cite people for that portion of it. But the bylaw does say in another area that they're not allowed to become, you know, general noise disturbance or continuous nuisance. So there's a little bit of a definition on that one. The compliance section, I didn't realize people were reading it as if the 18-month period might allow people 18 months to get rid of a rooster. That was never the intent. The intent was to allow people that may have to reduce their flock size or change the caging that they have attached to the shelter that they're using, an opportunity to have time to change that, come into compliance with the lot size requirement and the flock size requirement. So I kind of reworded that with that in mind, and I'll read that off real quick if you want, or I can just email it to you, whichever you prefer. Read it. Okay.
Please.
Instead of what's currently in that section nine, replace it with something similar to, current poultry owners have 18 months from the effective date of the bylaw to comply with the size of structure and maximum number of birds allowed under this provision. Structures existing prior to the adoption of this bylaw may be deemed acceptable on written authorization of the animal inspector, provided they do not exceed the allowable size. All other portions of the bylaw will take effect immediately upon passage at the town meeting, and I believe Christie said that they actually have to be 30 days, which he'll check with the town attorney. So I think that would resolve the confusion about the timeframe. I had never really intended to grandfather anything in. I intended that provision to kind of replace the grandfathering type thing.
Okay. Questions and comments from members of the board? Ian?
Yeah, thank you, Christie, for bringing it up, because it was a question I had, because seeing the comments, and I know we didn't talk about in the public hearing, but I guess, Melinda, for you, for your professional expertise, but your thought about roosters and some of the concerns we saw, at least in the written emails, about whether we should restrict roosters completely. So I'd love to hear your thoughts or opinions on that.
I think I said before, I'm sure there are more roosters than what we're hearing about. We currently have no regulations at all, so I can't make people get rid of them. What I've been telling people, if your neighbors aren't complaining, and I'm not hearing about it, I'm not going to really worry about being there. I think you've gotten a few emails from some specific people in, I believe, three locations. I think two of them have actually gotten rid of the roosters. So there's one that's actually got a no-crow collar. But I haven't been hearing from people since that time, so I don't know if it's a continued problem. I'm no longer aware of it. But there are a few others in town that, as we heard during the meeting, a couple of people said they sort of enjoyed, or they're not really hearing it, so they're not having an issue. There are ways to mitigate the rooster issues. Part of them were written into the bylaw for maybe hanging soundproofing structures or things like that, things like in order. But there is a no-crow rooster collar, and if it works. I'm just kind of reluctant to condemn a bird to death because it's the wrong gender. And I understand how people get stuck with them. They don't do it intentionally.
Thank you.
Sean? Any questions or comments?
Thank you very much, Melinda. On the sizing, so this only affects up to two acres. So if you're 2.1 acres, you're not, this doesn't apply to you?
I originally had written in two and a half acres. I don't know where the half got lost. At two and a half acres, people can petition with certain provisions, the State Department of Agriculture, to be classified as a mini-farm or micro-farm, depending on how you want to read it. At five acres, they can simply claim to be if they have the agricultural status. So this was intended to take care of the smaller portions, because at those points, other regulations come into play.
Gotcha. So right now, between two and two and a half, there's.
I'm willing to make an amendment to put that half back in there.
Well, I think that it was understood that the two acres was, anything above two acres was where that agricultural petition that you just described was able to happen. So I guess we'll just, our intention was that this would only apply to properties that didn't otherwise have an agricultural authority or permission. And so we can research that, but that would be our intent, is that this would only apply to properties that didn't otherwise have any sort of agricultural claim.
Just to tag on to Sean's comment there, because I was wondering the same, should the bylaw have a reference to that? So if someone is trying to understand the bylaw, that was my question, like, why are we stopping at two acres, or if it's in fact two and a half? So I'm wondering if the bylaw should reference anything over and above, and how there are other rules and regulations that kind of govern that as relates to this topic.
I think that, as Melinda was just describing, depending on your acreage, you have different opportunities available to you. So I think that we wouldn't typically include all of those in the bylaw, just be specific about what the bylaw governs.
Okay. Any other questions or comments, Shelby?
Well, I didn't want to interrupt Sean. I was just.
Oh, Sean has more. I'm sorry.
For some of these structures, I guess, if it is a non-compliant structure, but it's, it would be a significant effort to change, I guess, can some of these be grandfathered?
I had not really intended to grandfather anything in. I had intended to give people the opportunity to change the structure. Most of the structures that I have seen as animal inspector, inspections for 2020 obviously were a little different because of COVID, but in 2019, I saw the vast bulk of the structures in town. They're fine. The issue's going to be with the size of the caging that may need to be cut back. But any that I haven't seen, I'm not sure about. So I can't say that they won't have to make structural changes to the actual coop or building or whatever they're using. But the idea was to allow people the time instead of grandfathering anything in. Again, if you start grandfathering, are you grandfathering in a noisy rooster? Or a larger number of birds?
And during the public hearing, you did mention that the goal of the structures wasn't to say, you know, you had to go out and buy a chicken coop, that, yeah, you can use an old swing set hut or some other structure, so long as the space per bird was sufficient.
And that it's going to give it sufficient, you know, coverage. I don't want any rice paper structures. It's not something I would expect to have to worry about, as long as it's sound enough to the animals that are going to be in it.
Okay, thank you.
Makes sense. And maybe I didn't notice this the last time. I think it said for chickens now, it's five feet away from a budding property. Was it 10 before?
No, the original intent on that section regarding structures, it said structures would be five feet away, and it should have said structures for chickens would be five feet away, and then the other poultry, 10, and then the larger poltries would be a 50-foot away. And I think that we reworded the 300-foot setback in an earlier section as well.
Cut that out.
Like the abutter definition, which we changed to land sharing a common lot line or directly opposite of a public street away from the poultry account. That was one of the concerns that came up.
Oh, and I guess one other question is, so if I've got a one-acre lot, I can only have so many chickens? Whatever is 24. And then if I decide to have ducks, that's on top of the chickens, correct? So if I have 24 chickens, which is all the chickens I can have, I can then also have 12 ducks, and then.
As long as you've got a reasonable amount of space for them. I did put back in, and I think it's in the redlined version, in the original section, I had a thought on what best practices are. It's a little difficult to define best practices, but I had done a little research. And you have a new section that has the specifics of what is required for a duck, what's required for a chicken, what's required for a turkey space-wise. The thought being, you know, a bird that requires 20 feet per bird out exterior, that amount of footage is going to get added on to and totaled with whatever you have for chickens. So however many feet you need for the chickens, we add that, we add how many you have for ducks. That, again, is something that can be changed if it needs to be, like all of this. There's only a couple of people with ducks.
Right, right. No, that makes sense. So the amount of, say, chickens you have limits, then the number of ducks you potentially could have because they're using the same space, and it sounds like it requires some math.
You're going to have to have a larger space for them.
Okay.
Want to say.
No, but that makes sense, that you're not sharing the same space. All right, thank you.
Okay. Patrick?
Yeah, I guess I had a couple of questions or just maybe suggestions here as well. In section C4, we mentioned allowing any other inspection agent of the town as applicable, whereas in earlier sections, we talked about state as well, and I'm just wondering if we should add agent of the town or state as applicable into the language.
That's the reference to the animal inspector. State animal inspectors that actually are employees of Department of Agriculture are covered to go on to any farm in town as they see fit. So we don't need to have anything in the bylaw that allows that. State law allows that. As the animal inspector for the town and a town employee, I am considered under the state regulations. I can go on the lands, regardless of whether this is in the bylaw or not. I put it in there mostly because people that I don't know already have chickens, or people that are looking to try to find out what they can have, need to know that they should be inspected every year. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. Thank you. My next question was about section C8. We talk about appropriate enclosures, and that's kind of a subjective description, and there's nothing in the current bylaw language that specifically describes appropriate enclosures as defined as appropriate disclosures. And we also loosely talk about, and you mentioned it a minute ago, around best practices. And I'm just wondering if there's any, I'll say, industry or, you know, best practices that should be referenced, you know, whether it's a state, federal, whatever it may be, best practices that should be really, because it really seems very subjective.
It can be, and that was part of why I put back, and I'm not sure where it is in the letter in the redlined version.
Sorry. So the references to best practices, they, both references to best practices follow with, provided however that a minimum, and then it provides the minimum. So the bylaw puts forward what the minimum standard is.
Yeah, I get that about the space and the volume of birds allowed in an area, but when I look at the best practices and specifically the appropriate enclosures, we're talking about the enclosures themselves. And I know that there's language in here about, you know, the fact that it can't be untidy, and it can't be, you know, dilapidated. And that's good. I like that language. But I just wanted to make sure, or see if there was an opportunity just to reference specific best practices, if there was any sort of industry best practices or other that can be referenced.
Relevant to the specific enclosure?
Yes.
Well, so best practices is referenced twice. So one is in D1, and then that's where it talks a little bit more about structures. So it says best practices, and then it provides the minimum standard. So I guess I'm just not finding the spot that you're talking about.
Yeah, in section C8, poultry must be kept in an appropriate enclosure and must not create noise disturbances between hours of 10 and 7, right, et cetera. And then later on, it talks about standards of care, which then it starts to talk a little bit about the description of what the enclosure should be, but it references best practices. And I just, maybe there isn't a best practices. Maybe it's something that Melinda will have to rely on your expertise on, you know, the proper, I'll say, review of what best practices are when you go on a property.
So I think in your new redlined version, you have one that also says, like, quail require one square foot.
Yes.
Inside, okay. That's a little bit of a description of what best practices I was able to. That's a little bit of a description of what best practices I was able to find per type of bird. But if you look at them, you can see they vary quite a bit depending on the species. The enclosures necessary for the different species also vary? I don't know if that helps?
It does, thank you. My next question is around section F1. We described specifically, let me pull it up here. Slaughtering? In section F1, we talk about outside of the view of a butters, neighbors or other poultry. And I'm just wondering if we're worried about birds seeing other birds being slaughtered? And if that language is, is necessary?
Sort of.
Okay.
Honestly, chickens could get extremely excited if they see blood.
Okay.
So.
I learned a lot in the, in the meeting last week, so I'm not, I'm not a chicken owner. I, I support this bylaw and I'm glad it's being done because it's going to provide some clarity for the community. And I'm not trying to be silly or anything like that, I just want to understand.
Part of that is in there because we don't want the little chicken boy next door seeing you slaughter your chicken.
Oh yeah, that makes sense. Yeah.
That some parents aren't going to mind, but other parents are going to be very upset if that happens.
Yep, no, I, I, that makes sense to me. My final question.
From growing their own food.
Yep.
I'm not trying to prevent that.
Sure. My final question was on section I, and I was just curious is, will current non-compliant owners be notified of the bylaw and the deadline to comply on that bylaw?
The ones that I'm aware of, as I said, most of the ones I'm aware of are going to be fine.
Okay, yeah, no, I'm just wondering if they're going to be.
There are a couple that I will talk to. A couple that I've already said, we're talking about doing this bylaw, you may have to reduce the size of your flock.
We, we can certainly do things that, you know, try to make the community more aware as a whole. I think Melinda's saying is that we don't, we have poultry owners out there that we don't, we're not aware of. And so I'm not sure that we can say that it would specifically be sent to everyone who currently has chickens or, or other poultry. But there'll, there'll be an effort made to make sure that people are as aware as, you know, as we can.
Sure, yeah, no, my question was specific to non-compliant. For those that we know today are non-compliant, we passed this bylaw. How are they being informed so that they're made aware? You know, they're not, may not be watching this meeting. How are they going to be informed that they've got 18 months to become compliant?
And there's, as I said, a couple that I'm aware of that will have to reduce their flock size. But I've already told them that this is in the process.
Right. Yep, thank you.
Okay, anything else, Patrick?
No, that's it, thank you.
Okay, Shelby?
So a couple things. Under general regulation C2, and, and I do apologize, Melinda, to be candid, I have not had a chance to go back and watch the replay of the public hearing. So I, I haven't had a chance to hear those comments in the context of obviously this bylaw. And, and then do so compare sort of the notes that we had or the, the community comments that we received outside of that hearing. So on C2, I'm trying to understand why we talk about nuisance with a reference to odor or other condition, but noise seems to be one of the biggest issues as it relates to the large category of these animals. So that we consider putting noise in there?
I would think noise would be covered under other condition. I think odor was one of the other concerns that, that came up in the previous. But I'm sure that noise would be considered, we could certainly add the word in if you wish.
I, I think it should be being that it is probably one of the biggest complaints. And if, if ultimately we decide not to have a rooster, ban roosters, then that, that may, that may address that in a general sense.
So make it so effectively controlled so as not to become a nuisance due to noise, odor or other condition?
Right.
I'm sure that can be done.
Help me to understand the definitions are just going above that and usable lot size. Does, so I guess, I, I don't know where usable lot size is referenced elsewhere, I missed that. And so I'm trying to understand how it's.
There's a little further on. No structure and coop may occupy more than 25% of a usable lot size. And this was to address the, essentially what I think is the idea of urban blight. By not letting somebody have their entire backyard, one gigantic chicken coop. But in trying to calculate lot size, you can go on to the, to the town's website and get a basic mapping of every property in town, pretty much. That will give you roughly the square footage of the house, the driveway, majority of outbuildings. The idea of the usable lot size was to take the entire lot size, subtract all of that. If you've got semi-permanent things like a swimming pool or a giant jungle gym or something, subtract all of those things and then you're left with a square footage footprint. 25% of that is the maximum size you're going to be allowed. And this is, this is for your chicken coop, the enclosure. If you want to add a duck, they've all got to fit within that 25%.
So actually.
I'm sorry?
So actually, it's under D3, and there's a table there that says the maximum number of birds you can have. And that's where you. That's where usable lot size is referenced.
Well, thank you. While we're there, under C3, no, I'm sorry, D3. So maximum flock size by lot size. Flock is the entirety of any type of avian animal that is on your property?
I think it says chicken flock size. Just the maximum number of chickens that you can have depending on the lot that you've got.
No, it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't specify chickens at this point, but if it should, we should add that.
I thought I had that in there.
So we have minimum space requirements for chickens, and then, but then we have maximum flock size by lot size.
And this sort of goes off of what Sean was saying earlier is if you have, you know, you have a one acre lot and let's say you, you meet all the criteria for the space and usable space for those chickens to be safely housed in the amount that they are to be humanely treated, then how many total bird types can you have, you know, in your usable space? That, that's where this gets very murky, this policy or bylaw.
In another section, which I have is number five, I think you've probably got it as something else. Density maximum for other poultry. You could have, yeah, you could have a couple of turkeys and some ducks and pheasant or quail. And in the other section that outlines the best practices, as I said, all the footage totals would, would get added up. And you have the minimum space requirements for chickens, which as you can see for 36 chickens, the, the minimum amount of square footage you're going to need for them is 198 square feet. And that's based on one and a half feet of interior space plus 144 square feet, so four feet per bird of exterior. Like the run pen, whatever you have. All of which will come out after usable lots.
Okay. Okay, so the chicken, the, I, I think the chicken minimum space requirements is clear to me. What's not clear is if I have, if, if a resident has a combination of bird types. So we might, I, I guess I'll just say I'm not ready to vote on this tonight. I think this needs some, you know, I'd like to see a final, final version before us. So if, if we call for a vote, I won't be voting in support of it just because I don't think it's ready.
You were looking to vote on it tonight either.
Well, it was, it's for discussion vote on the agenda.
But I think our recommendation was not to vote on it from the town manager. That's how I read it in our packet, that we didn't need to vote on it tonight.
Okay, I, I wasn't clear on that, Ian, so that's why I just, so.
Nope. And I, I agree with you actually. I agree with you that we, there's changes we made tonight, we need to see final copies and it's, yes.
Yeah, I, I, I wasn't planning on calling a vote just given the number of clarifications that have been discussed.
Okay. So I, I, I guess I'm going to hold the rest of my comments at this point. Because the only, the only one I will share is that compliance of 18 months. I know when we got some written comments from members of the committee, there was concern that that compliance, as it relates to structures, that makes perfect sense to me, Melinda, like you got to give people time to kind of adjust to this. But compliance, if there's a noise complaint, I don't think is, or odor or something else. 18 months is a long time to come into compliance unless I'm not reading the new bylaw correctly.
And that was why I said maybe change that so that it's just the flock size and structure that we allow the longer time, the rest of it, I think it, I think Christie said might need to be 30 days or something.
Well, right, so Melinda offered, Melinda offered alternative language to, to address that at the beginning. And so we can incorporate that into the next draft that the board receives.
Okay, all right, well, so I'll, I'll hold the rest of my comments until we see sort of the, the next draft. And thank you, Melinda, for being on because you clearly are extremely knowledgeable about this. And, and I think it's important that we have a bylaw and, you know, that provides some clarity.
Shelby, can you email me some of those questions perhaps like?
Yeah, I, I will. Let me, let me watch the, the other meeting and I, I'll reach out to you directly. Thank you very much for the offer.
Can, can we? It would actually be helpful if, if you, if the board would just send comments to me and then Melinda and I can work on incorporating them. And then at your next meeting, we can provide you with a new draft.
But yeah, that's fine, that's fine.
That works. Ian, did you have any other comments?
I did not.
Okay, so most of my comments were covered with the exception of one, which actually sort of follows on Patrick about best practice. There's talk of, you know, size of the structure for bir, per bird and square footage and things of that nature. I'm wondering if we need general comments. Yes, for example, the outdoor pen needs shelter from predators. So should there be a general comment that the structure needs to provide adequate protection from the elements? Adequate airflow, things of that nature. I know it's probably assumed that that would be incorporated by, I wasn't seeing that type of, I mean, there's general talk about the health that, you know, able to support the health and wellbeing of the birds. But then the only component of that is really around the, the square footage per, per bird in the structure. I'm just wondering a general comment about adequate ventilation and adequate protection. I, I keep thinking of the video that showed up on social media where the ducks come out of the coop into the snow and they immediately turn around and go back in, you know.
Yeah, yeah, because it's too cold. Under the definition of structure, it says is closed structure providing protection from wind, cold, rain and sun. This includes barn stables, coops, huddies and other outbuildings.
Okay, so I did not catch that.
Just the definition of structure.
Okay. Okay, great, thank you. So any further questions and comments will be emailed to Christie, who will work with Melinda on a final draft for us to look at as early as our next meeting. So that we can wrap this up and, and vote to place it on the warrant at the appropriate time. Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much for all the effort on this. This is a lot, a lot of work and a lot of consideration. And like many things, it sounds easy when you start, but it's a lot more complex when you get into, when you get into the details. And I won't do any puns about chickens and eggs and things.
Well, Christie's put a considerable amount of work into it as well.
Yeah. So thank you, Christie, as well. Okay, so last item on the agenda before we move into executive session is issues and correspondence. And so I will open up the floor and I'll start with Ian.
Sure, lucky me, thank you. I just want to, just a couple housekeeping things, Shelby, at the beginning, but really just to thank Slukman Hashmi for his past three years on the board and, and all that he brought to it, and, and thank him for his, for his service. Congratulations to Sean and Patrick, looking forward to serving with both of you. And I know that for you, Patrick, I know Lee would, would, would love to be, it was great seeing her this evening on the climate change piece. But, you know, realized that the work entailed, you know, needed her to, to step down. So welcome to you. And then the final thing I had was, I did receive information today that I did want to ask the board and potentially if we want to do again, commendation letter or not, but that a, we had a notice of retirement in the DPW for Danny Moynahan after 48 years of working for the town. Put it in his retirement papers as of today. So I think a lot of us know Danny or, or have heard of him, but 48 years of work for the town is pretty amazing. And he deserves our congratulations and thanks for that amount of service. So thank you.
Okay, I, I think we've got, I see a lot of positive heads and thumbs up. So see if that's something you can draft and have for our signature, that would be greatly appreciated.
Got it.
Thank you. Okay, Shelby?
Sure, a couple items, I want to thank everyone for turning out to vote. It's something like 13%, almost 14% I think, which I was hoping for 20. I was the overachiever, but in a local election with, without any other sort of state or certainly presidential, that's actually one of the highest percentages of voter turnout. And I know we kept our volunteers, which I very much appreciate, all their time. We kept them busy and it was a, it was a, it was a busy day. And I know there were some comments, I think by and large, the comments that I saw online through Facebook were that for the most part, everyone felt very safe in terms of all the precautions and spacing. There were some people that weren't happy with that. But I think by and large, I think it was, it was very positive. So I want to thank everyone who participated for, for, you know, being, being kind and patient. It was great to see a line outside to get into the polls. As the board is aware, last Thursday, I participated, which is why I missed the poultry bylaw public hearing. I participated in a meeting with the Westboro Village HOA. And many residents there, there are probably like 75, 80 residents on that Zoom call. It was led by, Christie was on that for a portion and she hopped back and forth, as you know. It was led by Chris Pant and our water sewer operations director, I think I got his title correct, Christie, Josh Van Houten. So they really led the meeting. This is of course for the board's benefit that this is a follow-up to the meeting that we've, the open session, the open forum, as well as the agenda item we had, I think it was back on February 9th. So it was a really good discussion, lots of questions asked. Chris has since sent a letter to the HOA, which the board has received a copy of. And I would say that the discussions with Westboro Village HOA are ongoing. And, you know, it's a, and I'm not trying to be funny with this, but it's a fluid situation. So, and, but I, I think although, you know, tensions were certainly high during the meeting. I think the, the overall, you know, they, they just, they, they want clean water. They want to understand what's going on. And it was, they very much understood as an HOA and residents that the town is trying to work to really understand what, what's going on in the, in. they very much understood as an HOA and residents that, um, the town is trying to work to really understand what, what's going on in a, in a collaborative process. So it was a, you know, positive, but, you know, uh, in intense conversation. So, um, and, uh, with the support of the board, I'm happy to continue in that role as we have, uh, you know, other meetings in front of this to kind of closure. But again, it's really being led, um, by our DPW team because they are actively involved. I'm just sort of supporting that. Uh, Elto wanted to, um, give you a heads up and ask perhaps if we could have, uh, I can say this now that I'm not chair, I don't feel as guilty, an off-cycle meeting, um, perhaps as early as this Thursday. I think Christie said, um, we could do this by, uh, notice. The Rotary Club of Westboro, of course, has had a longstanding tradition of lighting the downtown during the winter season. As you know, there was lots of discussion about the lights this past year. As a member of that, uh, club and a part of the lights committee, um, I and others have been working to, um, come up with a, a much enhanced solution, um, and by, uh, hiring a private, uh, lighting company, a vendor to, um, light the downtown. And so, uh, with the board's support, uh, we, we need to hire that contract. Uh, the, the Rotary Club is going to fundraise. There are a couple of things that, um, the town would need to support. And, uh, that would be detailed in the meeting, but if we could have a quick meeting as early as Thursday, um, the Rotary, I see Christie's off mute, but the Rotary. No, I mean, just that they, they need to know that they can hire the contractor and proceed with the, the, uh, you know, that commitment. Uh, and it would be like a three-year commitment to work with this vendor. Um, so, um, if the board is supportive of that tradition, we would need to schedule a meeting.
So at this point, we, we wouldn't be able to do it on Thursday, but, um, we could do it for a meeting on Friday or Monday. You know, whatever.
Okay. Okay. I'll, I'll circle back with Alan as chair after I just had, one other, um, other. Oh, um, as we come out of, I was trying to keep my own writing, as we come out of the pandemic and things start to open up, um, Christie, I'm sure you'll be advising us, um, as to public gatherings and, you know, what we really have to think about as a board, how do we come back together to meet? I mean, I very much look forward to doing that with the board, but I also think, I mean, even with the attorney, uh, Riley, that was able to participate from Randolph, there is value in this format for a number of different reasons. I'm just using that as one example. Um, you know, Melinda being able to do the meeting from the comfort of, you know, her place versus kind of having to wait until eight o'clock at night for an agenda item. Um, so, uh, hopefully that's something we can maybe discuss during our retreat, um, how, how we do this in a way that, because I, I think public engagement in our meetings is very high. And, uh, we want to, you know, continue to see that and communication is as big thing as we all know that we need to focus on. So, anyway, I think that's all for me. Thank you.
Okay, great. I will go to Sean.
All right. Thanks Alan. Um, yeah, I would just, um, I guess just like to say thank you to, uh, John Arnold, our town moderator for, for the opportunity he gave me on the advisory finance committee and, and say thank you to all my colleagues or former colleagues on the advisory finance committee, um, for their efforts and time. I would also like to say, uh, thank you to all of you for being so welcoming. And, uh, especially Christie, who's helped spend some time with me to help me try and hit the ground running and getting things set up. Christie, thank you very much. Uh, and I'm looking forward to this. I'm looking forward to our offsite coming up in a couple of weeks, uh, really getting into, you know, kind of the strategic initiatives and in getting, you know, into the weeds and all those things you guys have been working on. Thank you very much.
Oh, yes. Shelby, you can jump in.
I'm sorry. You know what? I had all these other things. I, I want to thank the voters for, uh, you know, bringing me back for another three years. I, I shouldn't have overlooked that. Um, when you sort of continue on a term, it's sort of feels like one long day, one long meeting, right Ian? Um, so, um, but I'm extremely appreciative of the support, um, and I, um, I'm looking forward to working with this board and, and all the work ahead of us and him, and with the town, obviously. Thank you.
I echo that as well, Shelby. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else, Sean? Okay. Patrick?
Well, I'd, I'd certainly like to jump on the dovetails of everybody else. Uh, I certainly look forward to working with all of this board. Fantastic group of individuals as I've met you all over the last couple of months, uh, and learning about all the great work that, uh, you've been doing and helping you continue that momentum throughout the rest of the year. I think as Sean would also attest, it's just, uh, amazing what the, um, candidate process was to the election and seeing, to your point Shelby, all the people outside that day on such a cold day. Um, it's a real testament to all of the candidates, uh, who love this town, who stood out there for 12 hours in, you know, sub, uh, sub, single digits with wind chills below zero. It was amazing. So it took, it took me about two days to, to get the chill out of me. But thank you for all the voters for turning up. Uh, I appreciate their confidence in me and I do look forward to meeting, uh, working with this board. Uh, and Christie, I'll echo your team, uh, fantastic talking with them leading into the election and, and learning about all the great work they're doing. And I appreciate your help as I ramp up, uh, uh, to getting up to speed with the board. Thank you.
Okay. And I, um, I'll keep it very brief. You know, in many respects, democracy is not pretty and it can be the least, in some might view as the least worst form of government, um, for all its potential messiness. But I would say that, well, it can feel hard to get the government we want or even hard to, you know, feel hard to get the government we deserve. We always get the government we vote for. And so for the residents who came out and voted and, um, regardless of who you voted for and why, the fact that you were out there executing your, um, civic responsibility, um, is a great thing for the town and for our community. Through that process, we're able to move forward and, um, get the work done that has to be done for the betterment of our community. And so I want to thank everyone for coming out to vote and, um, the town clerk's office for running and the volunteers and staff for running another smooth election in a year of unusual elections and policies and procedures in locations. And, um, I think again, for the commitment of the candidates, um, all of them, and for the effort involved in the discussion of the issues at hand. So thank you. On that note, I will take a motion to move to executive session.
I guess that's my job now, right?
I believe so.
So I will move to enter into an executive session under Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to this, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with all unions under Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A6, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real estate in Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A7, to act under the authority of the board to approve executive session minutes.
Okay. And as chair, I declare that an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the board's litigating position and on our position with respect to collective bargaining with all unions. Um, the board will not be, this is the last item on our agenda, the board will not be reconvening in an open session. May I have a second to the motion?
Second, Marshall.
Okay. Thank you, Shelby. And roll call votes. Uh, Patrick?
Welch, yes.
Sean?
Keo, yes.
Ian?
Johnson, yes.
Shelby?
Marshall, yes.
By vote of 500, we are now adjourned into executive session, five being present. Thank you, everyone. And thank you Karen and the team at Westboro TV. Uh, as always, we appreciate your support.
So there are five meetings they're doing tonight. So.
Yeah, what a five. Amazing.